Public hearings, we have one on the constant yield tax rate and one on the proposed FY09 budget. And if you, if the clerk could remind me, am I, am I supposed to read or is somebody supposed to read the constant yield language?
Maybe if you'd like to start it off.
Sure, we don't have to read it verbatim, but it might be helpful at least to sort of summarize what the topic of this public hearing is.
If I can just advise that we had, we came up with a easier, more easily understood version of it one year and our hands were slapped by the state who said, no, you will use our language, please?
Yes, as the mayor indicated, the actual language in the public hearing notice is prescribed by the state. You actually have to put it together and send it off to the state and it has to match exactly, otherwise they will kick it back. Sort of in probably more plain terms, every year the state basically calculates what is known as the constant yield tax rate. Kind of in brief, what that means is the state looks at the city's assessed property values and calculates what the property tax rate is that would generate the same amount of revenue as the city is currently receiving, in this case in fiscal year 2008. So anytime that you have rising property values, which has certainly been the case in Tacoma Park for the last few years, the constant yield tax rate decreases. We are required by state law every year to basically advertise what the constant yield tax rate is and what the proposed tax rate that the city is considering and to give the community an opportunity to weigh in on that. The constant yield tax rate for fiscal year 09 is .549 or 54.9 cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. The proposed budget that I submitted to the council almost a month ago assumes a continuation of the current property tax rate of 61 cents per hundred of assessed valuation. And I think the council is not setting the property tax rate this evening. They will be taking that under advisement during the month of June and the scheduled first reading of the tax rate ordinance is on June 2nd. That's a tentative schedule with final reading of the tax rate ordinance scheduled to take place on June 9th. Jesse, did I catch everything I was supposed to say? Okay.
Okay, thank you. So first, we will take any public comments on the constant yield tax rate. And if you have any comments on that, if you'd come to the microphone and identify yourself and please keep your comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody who would like to testify on the constant yield tax rate? Okay, then we will take any testimony on the proposed FY09 budget. Would anybody like to testify on the FY09 budget?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Susan Wood and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Ritchie Citizens Association. The Ritchie Citizens Association represents residents who live along Ritchie, Geneva, and Oswego avenues and neighbors the Public Works facility. At our meeting last month, we invited Ms. Darrell Braithwaite to come and talk with us about the facility and she did and we had a very interesting discussion. At our meeting last month, we're writing this letter to petition you in support of funding the proposed renovations in the Public Works facility. We believe it's important to provide good facilities for the key public functions and government functions and that these should take priority over more glamorous but less important expenditures. We appreciate the services done by Public Works and its employees. At the recent meeting, residents speculated whether the current location of Public Works is optimal, given its proximity to watershed and it being at the intersection of several steep hills. If it's growing in size, why not move it to flatland where runoff, traffic, and demands of new environmentally sensitive equipment could be better managed? Has the city considered alternative locations in areas that are more commercial and then could sell the current property for residential development? For example, it would seem that for certain stretches of New Hampshire Avenue between 410 and Eastern Avenue, there's some real estate that is not developed and maybe not considered optimal by commercial developers. After this discussion in the meeting, we agree that if Public Works remains part of our neighborhood, then the way that it accommodates the needs of its employees and the intention to the environment that surrounds it are local issues for us. We want our neighborhood to surround a clean and healthy facility run by happy workers. So for the workers, we strongly support decent locker facilities, showers, and air-conditioned offices and think they're essential and we fully support funding of this renovation. For the neighborhood, we request the following. Grading of Ritchie Avenue entrance to Public Works as to require all traffic to come and go through the Ritchie Avenue gate rather than through Oswego Avenue. Second, the redesign of traffic calming along Ritchie Avenue and the intersection of Ritchie, Oswego, and Geneva so as to reduce emissions and noise associated with truck gear changes, stops and starts, and to provide traffic calming. Next, the use of equipment and vehicles that minimize particulate and gas emissions, noise, and which require minimal idling. This will improve the air quality in our neighborhood. Next, a reorganization and landscaping of the area at the bottom of Oswego Avenue so that the area for oil recycling is enlarged and kept cleaner and that the areas opposite the entrance to Public Works do not become a dumping ground for brush, old boats, and vehicles. A defined park-like entrance to Tacoma Woods there would help as well. And finally, design efforts to reduce runoff into the surrounding streams and Tacoma Woods. We hope that you'll take note of these issues when you tour Public Works next Monday. Thank you for your consideration of the neighbors of Public Works. We strongly support the improvement and enhancement of Public Works on Oswego Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Do you have a copy of that?
Is there somebody else who would like to testify on the FY09 budget? There will be, of course, other opportunities to testify about the budget as we take up readings of the budget and of course, everybody can always take an opportunity to contact me or your council member with any of your thoughts on the budget. We will now move to council comments. Do any of my colleagues have any comments, updates? Councilmember Barry.
I would like to congratulate Historic Tacoma for a very successful house and garden tour. I had the pleasure of taking my mother-in-law and my wife and we had a wonderful time. Some fabulous houses there and it looked like from the crowd that hopefully it was quite financially successful. Also, during one of the visits to one of the houses, there was a campaign there to help restore the Tacoma Theater. And I, it may be, you know, not appropriate or not precedented, but certainly for the city to consider taking out a membership with this organization, the money going to support the restoration activity. They're quite far along in their planning and it looks like a very serious group with a lot of capability to transform the place into, into a real first-class, a theater venue that I think will help us all on that side of the tracks as well as the other and maybe Barb at some point, we could look at, at procuring a membership in that organization to help with that effort. Beautiful day, good occasion, and I'm glad we were able to support it.
I just have two things. The first is I wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday, May 10th, is the electronics recycling that the city does once every year and that's from 10 to 1:30 on the back parking lot. I know that there are a number of people who every year remember it and get here late and the truck is full and they don't have the opportunity to put things on there. That's for basically electronic equipment, including computers that you want to see recycled and that company is contracted with by the city and they take the equipment and recycle all of the various pieces of the equipment properly and it's always a very popular thing for people to come to, so remember that one. The other thing I wanted to do was just take a minute and let people know about the interesting tour that I went on today. I've been active with the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments Chesapeake Bay and Water Resources Policy Committee for six years and every year we take a tour of a facility that will be important for us to know about in thinking about cleaning up the Chesapeake Bay. And we started the first year touring the bay itself, excuse me, we've toured various facilities. This year, we went to Blue Plains Sewer Treatment Plant today. And for those people who don't realize it, even though Blue Plains is in the District of Columbia, it treats sewage for not only the District of Columbia but Montgomery County, most of Montgomery County, about three-quarters of Montgomery County, about a third to a half of Prince George's County, a good portion of Fairfax County in Virginia, a good portion of Loudon County, part of Arlington County, the city of Vienna, and also Dulles Airport. And in the case of Dulles Airport, it can take as much as four days for whatever is generated at the airport to actually get to the sewage treatment plant. We learned a number of interesting things. I think when people think about sewage treatment in this area and think about Blue Plains, they tend to think of that as, oh, that's the district and they've got problems. I just wanted to let people know that in fact, they are pretty much a state-of-the-art facility, that they are the largest advanced sewage treatment plant in the country. They treat about half of the sewage in the Metropolitan Washington area. There's a huge capital investment that has been made. There's a huge capital investment that will continue to need to be made and that if various efforts to get federal funding for the district's portion of it to go along with Maryland, Virginia, which have dedicated some funding toward that, if that doesn't come about, the impact will be on the rate payers, which should probably include all of us who live in Tacoma Park as we pay it through WSSC, which sends the sewage to Blue Plains. And that could potentially mean rate increases of anywhere between eight and 12 percent per year on into the foreseeable future. I also just wanted to point out there were some interesting things that also came up that might amuse some people. As we know that WSSC has gone about a program to replace our water mains in the city and we have some of the oldest water mains in the WSSC system, which are about 80 years old. I was talking with one of my colleagues from Rockville. Rockville has their own municipal water supply that predates much of the water supply system that's in this area and in fact, some of their water supply infrastructure is up to 250 years old and they have identified wooden pipes that they have for water supply distribution in the city of Rockville. So it's not just WSSC who has aging infrastructure and needs to tear up streets. It's also places like Rockville with infrastructure that's three times the age of what we consider to be old here in Tacoma Park. So I just thought people would find it interesting and I'm not sure how many of you realize that Blue Plains is our sewage treatment area, but it takes care of all of Tacoma Park. So little update on the infrastructure that serves us and what might be coming in the future. Any other comments before we move on? Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, just very briefly, I would like to remind the community that on June 1st, the Tacoma Park Community Action Group will be hosting the Children's Day celebration at Piney Branch Elementary School. Give you more specifics on that next week. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is an update on the agenda or additional agenda items. There are no additional agenda items and I can sum up the agenda schedule for the foreseeable future by saying that in May, we will be dealing with the budget on Mondays and on a number of Thursdays, we'll see how many as we go through the budget, but we are scheduled for, I believe at this point, three, the next three Thursdays this week and the following two weeks. So we will be spending a lot of time in this room dealing with the budget. And the next item on our agenda is public comment period. If anybody has anything that they would like to speak to us about that is, let's see, we don't have any voting items tonight, so it would be anything that's on our, on our agenda tonight or anything that is not on our agenda. And if you'd please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Rose Brown. I live at 751 Carroll Avenue in Victory Tower. Following the completion of the Tacoma Park Community Center in the municipal building on Maple Avenue, residents of Victory Tower have complained about the difficulty they have going to the community center on public transportation. Victory Tower is located at 751 Carroll Avenue in Tacoma Park. The apartment building has 187 units for low-income seniors and those with disabilities. Many residents have difficulty walking, even the few blocks to the community center, and others need walkers, crutches, canes, or wheelchairs. Now, the bus ride requires one transfer and can take one hour or more to go the short distance. Getting on and off the bus is physically difficult and a transfer means another off-and-on procedure. The Transportation Committee of the Tower Senior Association Incorporated is requesting a route change in order to have a direct ride from the Victory Tower area to the corner of Philadelphia Avenue and Maple Avenue. This would provide access to the Tacoma Park Public Library, senior and recreation programs at the community center, business offices, for example, passport and police in the municipal building, and hopefully the Piney Branch Swimming Pool. This bus, number 25, change would also be a great help for a more direct route to the Washington Adventist Hospital. Our proposal is for the number 25 ride-on bus to follow Carroll Avenue from the Tacoma Metro Station to Philadelphia Avenue. It would proceed on Philadelphia Avenue to Maple Avenue and follow its current route on Maple Avenue to Washington Adventist Hospital. The return would follow this same route. Ms. Dina Archie, Senior Planning Specialist for the Montgomery County Department of Public Works and Transportation, spoke at our Tower Senior Association meeting on April 10th. She explained the process for changing a bus route. It requires a survey of the number of current riders, where they board and depart, comparison of the difference in time of an old and new route, and how it may affect the driver's break times. A 30-day public notice for any changes required. They only make route changes two or three times a year and the next possible time, if approved, would be in September. Last week, there were 93 residents and eight staff of Victory Tower who signed the statement. Yes, I would use the ride-on bus, number 25, if it were more accessible for travel between Victory Tower and the community center, library, and hospital. The Tower Senior Association requests your support for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to encourage the city to help with this to the greatest extent possible in addition to the benefits that were just mentioned. I know that the, many of the residents in Ward 4 who are seniors and disabled would enjoy the change because it would reduce the hardship that they experience because of the high speed bumps that are on Maple Avenue, on Upper Maple Avenue. The change in route would bypass those speed bumps and would alleviate their pain they experience as they go over the speed bumps on the buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on anything? And if I can just preface your comments by saying that last week, I thought we had some difficulty with hearing the three-minute buzzer for comments and was hoping to get it a little louder and it appears that this week it didn't get louder, it got softer, it disappeared. So maybe-
Technology's great when it works.
So maybe if I can just point out that until we get a louder buzzer, I might just kind of go to let you know that we actually got to the end of the three minutes. Thanks.
I generally try not to run over. I'm Sabrina Baron, I'm the president of Historic Tacoma. Thank you, Councilmember Barry, for your comments about the house and garden tour. The weather could not have been better if it had been ordered specifically, had a very good turnout, did very well. It's our primary fundraiser and that's even more important to us as we're now the owners of a commercial property in the Tacoma Junction neighborhood, 7328 Carroll Avenue, and we're in the process of renovating and restoring that property, which if you've engaged in any construction activities lately, you may know, does not come cheap. So thank you very much, we appreciate the city's support. I do however, want to talk about something else this evening that I fear is not conducive to preservation in our community and that's the proposal to study the feasibility of traffic circles at Tacoma Junction, which is now Historic Tacoma's neighborhood in two senses. It's in the middle of Historic District for which we provide stewardship generally and it directly impacts our property at 7328 Carroll Avenue. I would like to point you to the Historic District Amendment to the Master Plan, which calls for sensitivity and respect to be paid to the configuration of three state highways that comprise our primary main streets through Tacoma Park and through the Historic Districts in Tacoma Park. That's Maryland Route 410, otherwise known as Ethan Allen Philadelphia Avenues, that's Maryland Route 195, otherwise known as Carroll Avenue. Carroll Avenue in fact is, well, started life as Sandy Spring Road, which connected the Quaker community of Sandy Spring with Point South, like the District of Columbia. It's one of the oldest highways, byways in this part of Montgomery County, indeed in this part of Maryland. It's very important historically. I know you've heard from some other folks about concerns that traffic circles are not the solution for either traffic movement or pedestrian, pedestrian safety. Indeed, the fact that the area inside the traffic circle is called a pedestrian refuge should be a signal that traffic circles are not good for pedestrians. I teach at the University of Maryland, we have circles on the campus there and it's very difficult to avoid contact between vehicles and pedestrians in those traffic circles. So I think there's a whole set of issues there. But preservation is a very important issue. The impact that this kind of radical infrastructure reconfiguration would have on the Historic District as a whole and in particular on very adjacent historic properties, particularly private residents, two or three-man circle, not to mention the whole commercial strip there. I think it would also be detrimental to the much-desired business revitalization in that area to take a commercial main street off of the main street. So I've had some concerns for more than a year now about the traffic circles and I would implore you not to go forward with the process that includes traffic circles. They are not the solution. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Is there any other public comment?
Good morning, I mean, good evening, Mayor and council members. As Councilmember Barry might be aware of, there's been recent traffic circles that have been coming up in the neighborhood. Specifically, there's new traffic circles that they've set up alongside Kirkland, Hammond, and Kenwood Avenue. Actually, Hammond and Kenwood has two traffic circles that are coming up right now. They set up the cones recently. And one thing that I want to bring to your attention is that, from what my observations is, that I live on Cole Avenue. Not that many people observe traffic circles correctly. People park alongside it and, you know, it's, it's more difficult- People park alongside it, and, you know, it's, it's more difficult to move around. And I know clearly, one of my neighbors from Hammond Avenue, there's a "Do Not Enter" sign alongside that traffic circle. People still enter in through that side, and they just ignore it. So, the traffic circle is more of like an obstruction when people are driving. If at all anything, if you're going to keep the traffic circle, I mean, I would ask kindly that you at least shorten it, because it seems a little bit too large to be driving around it. And in reality, more people are just driving faster around it, I would say, because it's, it's sort of like a game, I guess, to them, for some of these young drivers and such. And that's all I wanted to say, with traffic circles. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anybody else wish to comment?
My name's Eileen Pouson, I'm with Historic Tacoma, and I'm just up here tonight to extend an invitation to the council to come and visit our building. We are now in the throes of discussing our FY09 budget, and we would love to show you what we have done and talk to you about what we need to still accomplish. And Dan, you've already gotten a tour of our building, and Josh, we're working to set up one with you. And Bruce, you haven't been there for a while, so we'd really...
A while.
Yeah, we'd really, we've done a lot, and we're very proud of it, and we'd really love to show you, but we'd love to show all of you. And I'm up here tonight because we're talking about the FY09 budget, and I think that we're going to need some help from the city to get in there, so we can get our records stabilized and out of the basement, and we're working very hard right now to stabilize the shell. We have an air conditioning system in there that will give us some humidity protection, much better than what we have right now, and some climate control. So, we're working very hard to get that shell stabilized. We're not going to have the archive storage unit built for a bit yet, still have to find the money for that, but if you can help us get that shell stabilized, that would be really great, because we could get into the building, get the records at least out of the basement into the building, and actually have them accessible. We have a lot of requests from people in the neighborhood for research on our history, and it's very difficult for us right now. So, we would welcome the opportunity now to take you on a tour, and you'll all be getting invitations, and we'll be writing you a letter for some assistance, and we would appreciate it if you would take that into consideration and help us get in there. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to make any comments? Thank you all, and we'll now move on to interviews for the Washington Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee. If Ann Hollander, Jim O'Brien, Eileen Sobek... Oh, sorry. Did you have any comments? Sorry. Go ahead, come on up and, and take a seat at the table, and the city manager will do her part real quick, and then we'll move on to that.
I'll be very brief. Just two items I wanted to share with the council, that we were notified earlier today that we have received the Government Finance Officers Association Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. This is for the comprehensive annual financial report that was shared with the council last fall. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge the work of our Director of Finance, Ms. Brooks, who was certainly the key player in getting that award. A second item, and on a much sadder note, I did want to share with the council that earlier today we did learn that one of our public works employee, very young, young man, unexpectedly passed away over the weekend during a basketball game. We don't have any other information about what exactly happened. His name was Anthony McDonald, some of you may recognize him as the individual who worked with our city gardener, Mike Welsh. So, we don't have any information yet. I believe Karen can correct me if I'm wrong on any kind of funeral arrangements, but certainly as we learn of those, we will share those with the council. So, certainly I think all of our condolences go out to Mr. McDonald's family.
Yeah, it's terrible.
So, that's it.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I overlooked your agenda item. I didn't have any room in the edge of the agenda to put all the times for various items, and they spilled down past you, so...
No offense taken.
Welcome to all of you. We're glad for your interest in serving on the Land Use Committee, and maybe if each of you can just say a few words about your interest and your background, and I'll start at this end.
Okay, I'm Ann Hollander, I live at 7904 Flower Avenue, and my husband and I have been residents there for 2000. So, we're immediately adjacent to the, to the site. Professionally, I'm Assistant Attorney General in the Legal Counsel Division in the Office of the Attorney General for the District of Columbia. Primary focus of my work there is in economic development. So, I think, I have skills that I think I could contribute to the committee, a personal stake in it because I live so close, but also an interest in representing the interests of the city in, in that context. It's a large piece of land, there's obviously significant competing interests, not the least of which is the healthcare in the community and accessibility to healthcare, but also economic interests of the city, the economic interests of the hospital. And I have a lot of skills that I think could be brought to bear to collegially work with those competing interests in a productive way.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Taggi. I also live in the neighborhood, I'm on Flower, down by the, by the creek. So, I too live very, very close to the hospital, and I use the hiker-biker trail, and I'm, you know, in the area a lot, I use it for enjoyment. I'm a lawyer, a litigator primarily. I represent clients who are commercial developers and home builders. So, I do have a lot of direct day-to-day experience with, with land use and development issues. My own personal views are more on the, on the, on the green side. I'm married to a PhD biologist and environmentalist, and I'm needling her to try to submit her application in time for, for the next round of interviews on the 19th. But it's, it's an interest, it's an issue that I'm very, very interested in, and I think I could, I could serve the council well.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, my name is Jim O'Brien, I'm a 20-year resident of the City of Tacoma Park. I own a business here in the city, I own a building here in the city, I'm a member of the FASAD Advisory Board, I just finished my second year as chairman. I've been a registered architect in the State of Maryland, and in the District of Columbia, and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the State of West Virginia for about 25 years. I think I bring a lot of experience to the table. I've lived here for a long time, I have my appendix taken out in that hospital, so I want to get them back. But it's, it's an unbelievable site in an incredible urban setting that really needs a lot of sensitivity, and I think as somebody who will be around for a while, I plan on staying in this neighborhood for a long time, and this is going to be, I think, a long-haul kind of project, I'd be very interested in tackling it.
Thank you. Eileen?
Hi, I'm Eileen Sobek, I live at 7637 Carroll Avenue, I've lived there for 17 years. I was president of my neighborhood association, Long Island Flago Neighborhood Association for the last two years, although I just handed that mantle over to someone else in the neighborhood. I'm an attorney for the Justice Department, I work for the Environment and Natural Resources Division, so while I don't directly do local land use planning, I've got a lot of environmental and general land use expertise. And I've worked, I'm interested in the neighborhood, I've spoken to a lot of people in the neighborhood over the last 10 years about hospital issues, and I think I've heard a range of views and My perspective has, has changed over time with respect to the hospital. I was active in a group called Sensible Growth that was interested in having the hospital stay, but in a, in a way that could be handled by the community, and while we were disappointed that WA had decided to move, I think that we all remain committed to trying to make sure that whatever happens on that piece of land, whether the hospital stays, or stays on part of it, or, or leaves and opens up new possibilities through sale or donation of the land, that the community needs to have a role in vetting that. So, I think that this is a great committee to do that job.
Thank you as well, thank all of you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Snipper?
I'd just like to thank all of you for volunteering to serve on this committee. It's a, it's a new committee, so you'll be in on the ground floor deciding, you know, just how it works as well as what it, what it does. We're in a, a good position, actually. WA is just finalizing its own views of what it might want to do on that, on that site, and is going to be looking for community input. So, this is really good timing, and I'm just really excited about the skills and talents you all bring to the committee. I think it'll be a really, a really good committee. Thanks.
And if I can just follow up for a second on one part of what you said. I was talking with the president of the hospital last week about their schedule for when they might be willing to, when they might be ready to talk with the community about what they've been considering, and my sense is that they will be ready within about two to three months.
Right.
And it's, I just also wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that where, whether that they originally considered selling the property, they've now decided that they want to keep the property, and that my sense is that there are some things that they would like to do. There will also be some, probably some portions of the property that will need and welcome input about other things that might happen, so that I think the timing for this committee, as Councilmember Rubin said, Councilmember Snipper said, is, is just right, and it sounds like so far we've got lawyers and an architect who are ready to step forward. Any other questions, comments from anybody?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all, and we will be trying to name people and get this up and running in the very near future, and we will let you know. Thanks. And then we have another interview for the FASAD Advisory Board, John Ursiolo. So, you're back for a second shot at it?
Yeah, back for a second shot. Yeah, I served on the committee for two terms, and according to the bylaws, you have to take a year off, which I did, and I'd like to get back on because I think, one, it's been a great committee, I think we've been very successful in trying to get, we're starting to get commercial owners know that property owners and the tenants are beginning to know that they have to come in front of us to, to at least present what they want, what changes they'd like to make, and we've been very successful in helping them go through the Historic Preservation Commission with very little hitches, which is really a great thing, so we can offer them something that if you come talk to us, we talk, discuss. It's been a great committee for that, and I served as the chairman over a couple of years on this, on the time that I was there, and would very much like to get back on and offer what I can again to the, to the committee. We have a great crew.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I would just thank you for being willing to serve again, and also thank you for your many years of helping to develop and, and keep the downtown as vibrant as possible, so thank you on both fronts.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Dito.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. You need it.
And may we continue with staying slightly ahead of schedule. The next session is a work session agenda item on discussion of Safe Tacoma Memorandum of Understanding. Representatives of Safe Tacoma and Chief would like to come forward, and did you want to introduce this?
Yeah, I'll just make some very preliminary comments. Before the council this evening, just for discussion purposes, is a draft memorandum of understanding with Safe Tacoma Incorporated. I think this has been discussed a number of times, both this year and last year, so it's very, very brief. The guts of this memorandum is actually the work plan that I think Mr. Grimes and Mr. Kellerman and Chief Rakucci will probably be addressing shortly. You will note that that is included in your packet, and it is, I think, Mr. Grimes can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's draft number 10, and I think there was clearly considerable work and thought that went into this document, and I guess I'd just like to take this opportunity to, to thank Mr. Grimes and all those who had a hand in this. It was a very, very impressive document and very detailed, so thank you for that. I think in my email communications with Mr. Grimes, he indicated that it was draft, because I think he was hoping to get some input from the council tonight before the documents finalize, so hopefully there'll be an opportunity for some discussion between the council and the representatives of Safe Tacoma this evening. For my part, I just wanted to hit a couple key items. I just wanted to call to the council's attention that there is a program monitor that would be designated on the city's side, just as there is for the District of Columbia with the Commander for the Fourth District. My recommendation that is reflected in the draft MOU is that Chief Rakucci would serve in that capacity. From a financial standpoint, there is kind of two key components I just wanted to highlight as proposed, assuming the council would adopt this memorandum next week, is that an initial disbursement of $30,000 would be made to Safe Tacoma Incorporated within 15, 15 working days after execution of the MOU. The second part of that would be approximately no later than six months into the life of the memorandum and the agreement between the parties, is what I have suggested is that Safe Tacoma Incorporated would come back to the council, we would get that scheduled in conjunction with the mayor. They would essentially issue a progress report formally to the city council, and assuming the council was satisfied with the progress that had been made, the remainder of the monies would be distributed to Safe Tacoma under the same terms and conditions, basically within 15 working days of that progress report being given to the council and accepted. I think the rest of the memorandum, quite frankly, is sort of a lot of, kind of boilerplate legalese, and unless there's any questions for me, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Grimes and have him make whatever comments he would like to make about the work plan, because I really do think that's sort of the guts of this.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager Matthews. The, the work plan has four sections in terms of the work. One of them is community networks, another is youth engagement, a third that would not start immediately is youth... Sorry, let me see what we actually called it. Youth offenders, and then conflict resolution is in there. We've done most of our work so far in conflict resolution, as you're probably aware. And then community engagement, you know, members of the Safe Tacoma Board and our advisory committee have been involved in a variety of community organizations, so what really happens with the programming there is that we formalize a lot of the things that people have been doing throughout the Tacoma Park communities already. I won't say much more about that than, other than that in the creation of the work plan, we did consult with community organizations to try to leverage their expertise and contacts and views, and we are going to look for them to help us in executing here and making this programming a reality. That includes the Tacoma Park Community Action Group. It includes, in the greater community, the Conflict Resolution Center of Montgomery County, whose services that we, we would expect to utilize. I, I won't say any more about the work plan, other than that we did try to respond to the concerns that council members raised in the February work session, and that Councilmember Wright was very helpful with suggestions to make this an acceptable work plan for the council. The only other thing I'll note in the packet is that we did get an extension of the timing for the District of Columbia grant to September 30th, 2009. That is the end of their and our 2009 fiscal year, with an authorization for spending the money that we requested through the end of this current fiscal year, September 30th. At that point, we would have a budget for our next fiscal year for the, I suppose we would present it to the council, but for the grant monitor's approvals. That's, that's really all I have to say. I would be happy to entertain any questions, but I will just again repeat that we tried very hard to respond to the concerns that the council members raised in the February work session, and to consult community organizations in building this work plan, and make it something that was going to contribute to public safety, to improve perceptions about crime problems around here, and be doable. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, go ahead. Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Rakucci, I know that you've worked closely with Seth Grimes and the Safe Tacoma group, and I'd just like to get your feedback on the MOU and how you feel about it now.
I think it's a very ambitious plan, I think it was well thought out. I told Seth when I saw it that I thought it was going to be, it's a challenge, because they really made some really goals and objectives, but they have, they have metrics in there to just look at where they're at, and now I look forward with the department working with them. And now, I look forward with the department, working with them and assisting them in whatever way we can to assist the community because we're all working together for the same thing, to reduce crime in our community, make it a safer place. I think their initiatives towards the youth are to be commended and I hope that we are able to work with them towards achieving their goals. And I will work very carefully as a monitor for the city to ensure that things are done. And I don't expect to build any issues there.
All right. I'm glad to hear that it's an aggressive plan and I hope to see you successfully complete it. Thank you.
Sure.
Why don't I let Rubin go next because I, mine were some particular things related to the MOU.
Okay. Councilmember Snipper.
I'm welcome. I did have a question. I thought it was a really ambitious plan and I applaud aiming high. I always think that's a good idea. But I, there was one part that was a little unclear to me as to how it would actually work out. And that had to do with the youth efforts, which I think are a marvelous part of it. As I understand it, the sort of catchment area is relatively small, sort of a half-mile-ish around the metro station, isn't that about what it is?
We changed our center point to the intersection right by the church downtown of Maple, Carroll and Eastern. And a half-mile radius does extend to Council Piney Branch School, Elementary School, I believe. It includes a good portion, if, I think it includes all of the Wacko neighborhood in Ward Three and touches the Pine Crest neighborhood. It includes all of the Philadelphia Eastern neighborhood and parts of North Tacoma.
I guess...
That's a focus area for trying to address crime in that area. That's not to say that we wouldn't deal with people who come from outside of that area. The key point about this focus area is that includes downtown Tacoma Park, the so-called Main Street on, in both the district and in Maryland. It includes the community center. It includes the transit facilities. And these are used by just about everyone in Tacoma Park. So this is the focus area for attention for crime reduction. It's not the only area that we would serve. We consider our stakeholders to be anyone who uses the transit facilities, who uses the commercial area in Old Tacoma, who lives in the area and so on.
Because we have a lot of youth in Ward Five and they are in fact outside the half-mile but could in fact benefit from it. And I gather from your remarks that this isn't exclusive, not going to draw a little line and kick people out.
Let me give an example, maybe Faith will, after I introduce it, Faith Wheeler will want to amplify. We've had a number of discussions that Faith and Sarah Green have spearheaded with the Tacoma DC Recreation Center about introducing a conflict resolution component to two of their summer camps, which are soccer and tennis camps. Well, you know, this will teach the kids skills and so on, but a lot of these kids will be coming from outside of the Tacoma area and they'll be using Tacoma Transit Facilities and so on. And if we can only, if all we do is teach them how to behave themselves when they're on the public transit, then we'll have accomplished something. But we want to teach them something beyond that. So these are Tacoma stakeholders because they're coming here for an activity. They don't necessarily live here. It would be the same with people in Ward Five. The only other thing I would say, I think I keep saying the only other thing, but anyway, is that...
We did notice that.
One of the things we'll do early is a whistle program that has been done in a number of places before. Councilmember Wright's mother was involved in a program like that in Boston. Sabrina Barron, still here, was involved in a program in Chicago near the university there and so on. We think it'll be effective. You know, if people want whistles, then we'll carry them and use the Tacoma Transit Facility, you know, walking there or whatever, you know, we're not going to, we're, part of the program is to take down their names and addresses and to try to engage them in informational efforts if nothing else. But, you know, I don't envision that we would say, no, you live outside half a mile and we're not going to give you one or sell you one. That's not quite determined yet.
Yes, I'm glad to see a couple of things here. One, the partnering with the Tacoma Rec Center and the staff, I think that's really important. I think that these folks know a lot about how to interact and communicate with kids and young people around the area. And I think that they know a lot and they'll be happy to share a lot, so I'm glad to see that. I too am still a little concerned about the breadth of the project. It still looks a bit like we're trying to simmer, if not boil, the ocean. But I think what will happen and what I hope will happen is once you get into the meat of it, you will figure out, hopefully quickly, the kinds of things that seem to be the most important and are working best and will shift the focus and the attention accordingly. Overall, it's hard to find fault with the purpose of the project. I can't find any. And I'm glad I can't because I think that our country now is spending a whole lot of money on nation building outside of the United States, billions and trillions of dollars. And it's nice to see a project that proposes not only to do some nation building inside the country, but at the level of the local community. And if we can help these kids stay on the right track and avoid going off the track so that they can become productive members of the community and of society in general in this time of, you know, great, great challenge for all of us, but particularly young people who don't get a strong formal education. We're only going to see the gulf widen between those that do and those that don't. So I think it's more important than ever that we intervene as early as possible and with as many resources and as much smart thinking and good programs that we can possibly come up with. So I wish you well. If there's anything I can personally do for you to help in this effort, I'll be glad to do it. But I completely support it as presented tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
Sure. Well, I wanted to thank the chief and Barb for the time they spent putting, constructing the MOU. I know that Barb and Seth had discussions back and forth and Barb worked with the city attorney, so I thank you for that, Barb. And I think it's constructed quite well. I did have a clarifying question. One was, at the end of 2009, that means the MOU terminates, correct? So if we've dispersed additional money or the money already dispersed hasn't been spent at that time, if the money isn't spent, then we would ask that that money be given back to the city, is that correct?
That is certainly one alternative. The other is obviously that the council just basically essentially extend the MOU. In talking to the city attorney, because Seth and I had some back and forth, she thought it was important that it actually have an expiration date, but clearly the council in its discretion could just extend that.
And then the one suggestion I might have is that we, we say something like that they come back and report between four and six months or five and six months. If I wouldn't want to see Safe Tacoma back here in two months, reporting and then feeling like we had to make a decision about whether to disperse the rest of the money. I do commend Seth and Andy and Faith for listening to the many voices in the community and the chief and the council on their suggestions. I think the MOU is very good, as I said before. The work plan has become much tighter. I do also agree that it continues to be ambitious and I think it's good to set ambitious goals. I think as Doug said, as you get into the meat of it, you probably will refine further and I look forward to reports in the future about how things are going. And I think, you know, as we saw recently, we had a very alarming crime on Tulip Avenue where someone was, their moped was stolen and I think that same, it's likely that those same individuals then committed another crime somewhere else in the city. You know, this isn't going to be the panacea and that's going to end all crime, but I think we need to take a variety of approaches. The chief is doing an amazing job with the police department in addressing crime and I think this is just another tool that we can try out and I think will have a positive impact, so.
Other, any other, Councilmember Robinson?
I don't have much to say. I also commend you for tightening up the work plan and the critical thinking exercises catch my eye, the entrepreneurship and the purpose in life and financial literacy and pleasing personality, that's a good one to throw in there. The financial literacy and entrepreneurship, I look forward to seeing how that will play out as well.
I want to add one more thing, which is that we are aware that we are a public safety program, crime prevention program, and we will retain that focus in implementing these things. We're not an entrepreneurship program, we're aware of that, so we will attempt to tie everything back to public safety goals.
I know this has taken a long time to get to this point. I'm glad we're finally there and we will have this item on the consent agenda for approval next week.
Thank you.
Thank you all, very much. And the next item on the agenda is a update from the Independence Day Committee, and I see a number of committee members who are here, if any or all of you would like to come up to the table.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. I guess I am the spokesperson for the committee, Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee. I'm Gene Herman and I live on New York Avenue. The current year's July 4th celebration will mark the 119th annual Independence Day festivities. And if you notice, the seal, when the city was incorporated, it says 1890, so that, according to my calculation, means that we've had a 4th of July celebration every year since incorporation, plus one. Since last year, the members of the committee have worked nearly nonstop to make the day a truly outstanding event for Tacoma Park citizens and the surrounding communities. How have we done? Well, the Tacoma Park events have been consistently listed as a best bet for a 4th of July celebration in the Washington area by the esteemed Washington Post. We feel that we would like to bring the new mayor and city council members up to date regarding the status of this year's activities and suggest ways by which the 4th, July 4th activities could be delivered to the citizens of the community more effectively. I would first like to talk about the membership of the committee. We have two categories of membership. The approximately 12 regular members are the main core of the committee's activities, are involved in planning and executing phases of the celebration all year round. And what you see are members of the core committee, the regular members. And presently, there are eight to 10 additional volunteers who assist in specific tasks prior to and on the day of the 4th. What you have in front of you is some idea of what the tasks are involved in, and it's not all of them, but it is some of them, some of the main tasks, such as planning the parade, inviting parade participants, planning, managing and staging of the parade entries, planning and managing vendors, inviting and hosting dignitaries and judging and recognizing winning parade entries. The evening activities involve selecting and contracting with the fireworks vendor, planning and managing musical entertainment, planning and managing vendors. Other tasks include advertising, signage, advising the organization in the areas of insurance, legal consultation and bookkeeping. And of course, there is the endless task of fundraising. The day's activities cost approximately $20,000. At this time, I would especially like to mention appreciation of two longtime members. On my left and on your right is Bell Ziegler, former head of the city's recreation department and the driving force behind the July 4th celebration for 46 years. On my right is Jimmy Jarville. On my left, I'm sorry. That's on my left and my right. Anyway, Jimmy has been, is a member of the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department and has been on the committee for 44 years. So by my calculations, that covers 90 years of the celebrations. We are also recognizing Terry Seaman, as he assumed the presidency of the committee when Ernie Wiseman's illness made him unable to continue to serve at this time. We are expressing appreciation for all of their efforts, of these individuals, as well as all the people that are involved in this Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee. Now, we have some issues that we feel could be helped by the action of the mayor and city council. First one is we are continually reevaluating our process and product with a mind toward improving the events. We encourage the council and community at large to give us feedback and suggestions for making the day better in the future. We would like, this is our request, our, we would like each council member to attend civic association meetings with at least one member of the committee and help us solicit new neighborhood volunteers to join the committee. This is the core of our, is the volunteers and we need volunteers. As mentioned above, each Independence Day celebration costs about $20,000. In recent years, we've had to reduce the evening's fireworks displays to stay within our budget. We do not have a benefactor like the city of Rockville does. So we depend on, for instance, selling raffle tickets. So selling more raffle tickets would help us to defray costs. We would appreciate each council member's active assistance in locating people on each block and within each community to help us sell raffle tickets. Third, we feel we need a mobile bandstand or platform with a canopy to use as our reviewing stand on Maple Avenue. As a background, the city previously owned one that deteriorated beyond the point it could be used for any activity. Later, we obtained one that was costly to rent and is no longer available for us to use. Our most recent platform did not have protective qualities necessitating renting a canopy. Hopefully, somewhere or somehow, the city will decide to purchase one that could be used not only for the 4th of July, but for the Folk Festival, the Jazz Festival and outdoor band concerts. We could not continue to put on this important event were we not given some valuable assistance from the Tacoma Park City Government. We would like to thank the following departments for their ongoing help and support: police, public works, fire and recreation departments. In addition, the city administrative and clerk's offices have been also very valuable in providing assistance. And we would especially like to thank the mayor and the members of the Tacoma Park City Council for your ongoing encouragement and financial support.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to make a plea to my colleagues that we step up and give the committee a hand. I know Councilmember Robinson has assisted for some years in the past in fundraising and I know that we could provide some real valuable help to them in identifying people who we know in our wards or anywhere in the city who might be able to give a little time to the committee. I think people don't realize that it's a, that it's a volunteer committee that puts this on in conjunction with help from the city. They tend to think that it's a city function. And they don't realize that the fundraising is a real valuable part of putting this whole thing on. And I think a lot of it tends to kind of go to the last minute and devolve to a couple of people who do it out of the goodness of their hearts but really need help. And I think we could provide that help in getting a much bigger cadre of people to go out and actively solicit their friends, their neighbors, to contribute some small amount or maybe in some cases, some larger amount to help this go forward because I think it's, it's one of the signature events in the city and we're, it's known around the area and people really enjoy it. And I think we need to do this. So I, I look at all of us and I look at myself and say, we need to do more. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. And as the current chair of the committee, I can tell you that the, the committee is a fun place to be. It's one of the more enjoyable committees to work on and I encourage people to consider becoming a member of the committee, working with the committee, because not only is it a fun time, but it, when it gets to the actual day, Independence Day... because not only is it a fun time, but when it gets to the actual day, Independence Day each year, it's very rewarding to see the event take place, unfold in the community. It's a complete day of parade and fireworks. We get a little break in between where we get to go home and spend some time with our families and do our cookouts for the day. But it's a very rewarding experience to participate on this committee. My wife and I have been on the committee now for several years, and so it's a firsthand report. But the committee itself is looking for, as Mr. Herman said, two types of volunteers. People who want to join the committee, meet once a month to do some of the actual planning for the day's events, but also some worker volunteers. And there is a whole range of activities and tasks that we need help with. Fundraising is one of the big, important tasks that we do. But there are many other tasks that we have that kind of fit everybody's desires and needs. From, I know Matt's wife drives the truck that tows the trailer with a big firecracker on it to give advertising to some of our donors. There's people needed to help stage the parade participants as a weight entry into the parade. We need people, you know, soliciting donations from businesses, need help monitoring the vendors and organizing the vendors. So there are a whole host of activities. I think anyone wanting to serve the community in some way, I think this is an ideal committee to join. And you could know that whatever your specialized talents and desires are, there's probably a need for that on this committee. I thank you all for your many years of service. Mr. Herman, you mentioned the years that Bell Ziegler and Jim Jarboe have put on the committee, and you said that added up to 90 now. How many years have you had on the committee?
Just 30.
Just 30, okay. So that pushes us over the 119 mark, 119 years that we've had this celebration in Tacoma Park. We have just in three members, over 120 years of dedication to organizing the events. And we thank you all.
Councilmember Wright.
I will definitely go with representative to my neighborhood association meetings. Actually, on the 22nd of this month, the Penn Neighborhood is, I guess it's technically called the Old Tacoma Neighborhood Association. But they're having a meeting, I think it'll probably be at 7:30. It is, the main focus of the meeting will be around public safety. And the last time we had a meeting like that in the fall, we had, I think, the highest turnout in years. There was close to 60 people there. So it'd be a good meeting to attend with you and we can interject some time for the Independence Day Committee on the agenda. I'll also contact Jim Evans in North Tacoma and Wayne in Hodges Heights to set up times to go and talk to those neighborhood groups. I did have a question whether, just thinking about how successful national political campaigns have been recently in terms of raising money online. So I wonder on the website if we have the capability to allow donations on the website, because I think that might help us raise money, being able to drive people there, because so many people are listserv-based and respond to emails. So if we can figure that out, I think we could actually bump up the fundraising. You know, people's intention can be to fundraise, or to give, or if someone comes around and knocks on the door and sells them a raffle ticket, they'll buy it. But if you don't touch the person, it's just the online aspect just makes it so easy for people.
And if I could just add to that, a number of us have rather lengthy email contact lists or groups that we post to, individuals that we send things out to. And so if there were a, something that you could send to us that we could forward on to those groups that would have the outline of the information of what you need for volunteers and way, contact for both volunteers and for monetary contributions, people could put a check in the mail to you. So if you give us an email that we can send around, we can add some, a personal touch to it and send it along and hopefully get some volunteers and some money coming in that way as well.
One thing, you referenced the fireworks. We have outstanding fireworks, but you know, a big chunk of the change, or 50% of it, is the fireworks. And I know people enjoy it, and sometimes people say, "It's over." You know, they enjoy it and they're all amazed and spectacular fireworks. But again, we can't give them any more unless we have money. And really, as Gene mentioned in his report, he covered pretty well, is that we get the volunteers and we get some funds, we can do a lot more. And we try to do our best and I enjoy it, and again, all the committee members. But we just need support. We feel that the mayor and council could be a big, big help overall in improving and making it better. And again, this 119th, and I've only seen, that I can remember, maybe 50-some, maybe a lot more my earlier growing up in Tacoma Park. But I think we have something to be proud of, that, you know, 4th of July parade. And sometimes the parade runs short, you know, you're looking for a two-hour parade and sometime it gets a little short because of, you know, maybe the people want to go, maybe where the prize money is more, and this and that. But again, I reemphasize, we need your help in the community, the volunteers and the ZIT. We look for all the help.
Yes, I just want to share a little personal story here, short. When I first came to Tacoma Park many years ago, one of the things I was slightly leery of was the 4th of July parade, because I had grown up in an era where people were kind of, you know, patriotism was used as a club. And the 4th of July whole thing was part of that. So I had some very unpleasant associations with it. But my friends and neighbors encouraged me to go and I was delighted to find that it reflected the eclectic spirit of Tacoma Park. And I have tried to go every year since. I haven't missed a few, but my kids are great enthusiasts of it as well. So I will do my part to try to raise some money for the Independence Day and get folks to come out. There's always a big turnout anyway. But we want people not just to show up, but also, you know, open their wallets. So I just want to thank you all for providing what is, in fact, a really cool, unique experience for Tacoma Park that I think reflects the true patriotism of Tacoma Park, not kind of the fake stuff that you often hear.
And if I can just add a comment, I wonder if the general public realizes that some of the things that many of them may enjoy, in addition to the diverse elements that I think are unique to our parade, that I know many people enjoy the, some of the steel bands and those types of units that perform not only in the parade, but end up as they're down the road after the end of the parade, performing for a period of time for a whole bunch of people as they leave the parade and on down Maple Avenue. And people get a lot of enjoyment out of that. And am I correct in remembering that those bands are paid? And so therefore, part of the money that's raised is for kind of that entertainment piece that goes even beyond the parade to provide for people, kind of, it kind of sometimes ends up being a big block party down on Maple Avenue. And if people realize what it takes to put this kind of event on, I think it's a lot easier to feel that it's important to contribute. Any other comments? Councilmember Robinson.
I love the parade. Thanks, Paul. I thank you all for being part of it and making it roll. And I'm glad you're going to bring us specifics of things that we can ask our constituents to do. And make sure you put in that email that you send to us that we can forward on, a physical address where checks can be sent, and an email address where inquiries can be made in return, and a phone number, if that's appropriate, somebody to call and offer their services or their volunteerism. There's a WACO walking meeting, that's Westmoreland Area Community Organization. Walking meeting tomorrow night at 7:30 and starting at 6502 Westmoreland. I don't know if anyone would like to come and just be there to make a pitch. I'm sure it'd be well received. You don't have to walk the whole time with the neighborhood association. And there are six or so others in my ward that I'm glad to work on, to get all these volunteers and get the fundraising really up there. And I've always, at the longest time, since I've been here, took the 22 years coming on that I've been here, I've always wanted and encouraged different neighborhoods or blocks to pitch in, either with money and what have you, or time, or with floats. And I'm going to encourage everybody to try to throw in a float if they can and mix it up that way. So thank you all for continuing this great job.
And I would just like to thank Dan for his help, as he has mentioned, by encouraging his neighbors to put floats in the parade, to enter into the parade. And that's one request that we didn't make tonight and should have, and that is to encourage neighborhoods to call us and enter a float. And we use the term loosely, you know, come up with an idea for an entry in our parade and come and join us and make the parade even better. And I'd also like to thank Dan for the help he's given in many other ways through the years, including printing of donation request letters and some of the other computer support that we needed. And I thank you. By the way, anybody right now who's sitting there itching to make a donation or to join the committee can call 301-565-0190, okay? Operator 301. 301-565-0190. Thank you.
Listen, I just wanted to, I hate to come back to it, but the issue of the platform is really kind of a, it is sort of a big item, because these are all the dignitaries from the county and the state who come to the parade and there's no cover over it.
And actually, there's no platform. The platform that we used last year for the reviewing stand was from the county and I understand they've said we can't use it again. So the committee is turning to the city to ask for help in finding that resource for a reviewing stand that we can use. The committee thinks it would be a good idea for the city to fill that need, not just for our committee, but for some of the other events that go on in Tacoma Park. We used to have the big bandwagon, the mobile bandwagon, or bandstand that fell into disrepair and we got rid of it. Hyattsville had one for a while, but they experienced the same problem. It is no longer available in Hyattsville for us to borrow. So we're kind of turning to the city manager and to the city council to say, is there anything we can do with the city to provide a reviewing stand?
And I thought I remembered that one had become available. Was that the one that the county, I thought there was one that somebody was going to give to us.
I think you're thinking of the stage that we got, I believe it was from Park and Planning or Montgomery County.
But that was a stage, but it wasn't suitable for this?
I think it's, I'm not an expert in this, but I think it's somewhat different than a reviewing stand.
Mrs. Ziegler.
The platform we used last year was from Park and Planning PG County. And since we're no longer imprint articles in Prince George's County, they are not allowed to loan it out or rent it out. And I understood that the one that the city got was from Montgomery County, but there's no canopy with it. So what I would suggest is that the city either rent or buy one, unless they want to sit out in the sun and that sun gets awful hot sitting out there. So do you have any idea what size it is?
No, I'm sorry, Mrs. Ziegler, I do not, but we can certainly.
Is that something we could maybe just, in the sake, interest of time tonight, just say that city staff will?
We can do some research and bring back some numbers, probably within the next week or two, to the council.
Thank you.
Just one suggestion on potentially financing that is, if it is something that can be used by a lot of these different events, I know the Folk Festival rent stages, and I think the Street Festival does as well, a lot of times the economics of those things are, if you, you know, it's like a third of the cost to rent it as it is to buy it, or a quarter. And if all of those entities are doing it, then they can each contribute something and maybe the street can contribute a little something. We could buy one that could be used for a number of years.
The city also used to have concerts in the park when we had their bandstand. It was either in front of the city hall or else in some of the parks around here during the summertime.
Mr. Wright, the Penn area, I don't know if you know, but Dean Hovey has taken that over as far as collections, and I'm sure that he would appreciate any additional people. But he has been doing it for a number of years, organizing the Penn area to go door to door.
I did know that. I sold raffle tickets on my street forum last year.
And Mayor Williams, I would like to point out that because of the topic tonight, that Uncle Sam has shown up in the crowd.
And I guess if we can have some information back from staff on the platform, or the bandstand, or whatever it might be, and I think, given that we're starting our budget discussions tonight, it's timely to have that information and also about possible turnaround on those choices, whether they be rental or purchase, what might be appropriate for this year.
And Lou. It might make sense to have part of the fundraising drive be the down payment on this bandstand for this year, so that that might invigorate people as they're reaching into their pockets to say, "Oh, we need a bandstand and you guys are the focus, so let's get started with that." I don't know how much of your budget you want to carve out for a bandstand, but it might give it a good focus.
Yeah, if we can, maybe we can add some information when we get things from the committee and point out that these would be useful for any number of other things that people recognize as signature events in Tacoma Park, like the Folk Festival, the Street Festival, and various items like that.
If you bought one, then you could rent it out to the Street Festival and make money for the next year.
We did rent it when we had it. It was a secondhand one from Park and Planning that we purchased, bid on, and that we had. And then I think Hyattsville did the same thing, but theirs has deteriorated so that they no longer can use it either. So they rented from Park and Planning.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We'll see if we can make some progress on this. And we will take a short break and we will reconvene for our budget work session at 10 after 9 on that clock in the back room.
So, the city manager would like to lead off with our first item about the general fund overview.
Sure. If I could get, we have a couple of staff people in the audience in case I need them to ask, answer some questions if they can just kind of come up to the table. What we wanted to do this evening is just touch a little bit on the general fund and make sure that the council as we move forward into talking about the individual departmental budgets, has a good sense of the general fund. It really is, as we talked about during the public hearing a couple of weeks ago, pretty much about ninety percent of the proposed expenditures for FY09. So I think having the council kind of kick off its process with a solid understanding of the general fund, what is being proposed, and kind of where we are financially, I think is sort of critical. So with that, included both in your council budget binders as well as in the agenda packet for this evening is some of the materials I'll be referring to relative to the general fund. Overall, general fund revenues are up just under eight percent. That's about one point fourteen million dollars. As we talked about a couple of weeks ago, unlike many jurisdictions in the metropolitan area, Tacoma Park is seeing continued growth in property values. And I would note that a lot of the revenue growth proposed for the general fund is coming from property taxes. Despite the fact that the property tax rate is proposed to be remain at sixty-one cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, the fact that property values are rising does mean that some Tacoma Park residents would undoubtedly see an increase in their property tax bill. Another area where we are projecting to see some growth in revenues is the police rebate. This is not the tax duplication payment, I think that sometimes people think about when you hear the term rebate. This is funding from the county and it is based on assessed valuation. The reason for the growth is, besides the increase in assessed value, is just what the county has referred to, and I'm not sure I entirely understand it, they talk about a technical adjustment in the way they do their calculations. I don't know if Ms. Brooks has any more insight than I do. I think both of us were just pleased to see that we actually had a number going up between '08 and '09. You'll note in the revenue detail, it's in your budget binder, we are projecting to receive some monies from WSSC. I know the mayor has asked for some additional information about how those amounts are calculated and how that sort of fits into the city's street work plan, and we do plan to distribute that as part of the preparation materials for the public works budget. With those few kind of bright spots, I would say overall, revenue growth in the general fund is very minimal, or in fact, it's declining. I think we are not immune to some of what we are seeing happening with some of our neighboring jurisdictions. If the council looks at the actual revenue detail, you'll note that there is a projected decline in highway user revenues. We do get that figure from the state. As we talked about a few weeks ago, income taxes are essentially flat. This has been an area in recent years where we have seen some pretty steady growth. That is not what we are actually projecting for FY09. In fact, if you'll look at the revenue detail, we are actually projecting that we'll fall short of the budget for the current year. The major reason for that, and I think a lot of the uncertainty that we have in terms of providing the council with an estimate for FY09 for income taxes, is in the fall the state legislature did pass an increase in the exemption for personal income taxes. There's a lot of confusion about how that is going to be phased in and what impact that is going to have on jurisdictions. Ms. Brooks and I worked, as we did last year, with the economist from Montgomery County who has been kind enough to share some of their projections and what we sort of do is match up our projections with theirs, and they're not exactly corresponding, but there's at least a relationship that we feel reasonably comfortable in sharing with the council that we don't think we're going to see very much growth in that at all for FY09. I think an issue that's been talked about at, I guess, at great length over the last few years are truly tax duplication payments. The council is aware that there is a revenue sharing task force that consists equally of representatives from Montgomery County, appointed by the county executive, and representatives from the municipalities that were appointed by the then-chair of the Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League, who serve on that committee. I am one of those six municipal representatives. Our work has been ongoing for about a year. We have asked the county executive for about a ninety-day extension to allow us to wrap up some issues. I know Suzanne was at a meeting of the county council today, and I think even though it is a county executive task force, they apparently are quite interested in us getting our work done as well. So at this point, we are proposing to the executive that we have until July 31st to wrap up our work. Unlike last year when we sort of got into a battle with the county council in terms of actually leaving the payments unchanged while we worked through these issues, this year I think it went very smoothly. There didn't seem to be any dispute among the county council that the amount should stay the same, which while that's overall good news compared to what could have happened to us last year, the bad news is obviously we're not seeing any increase. If you take out basically the restricted payment from WSSC and what we're seeing happening with property values, we're only seeing general fund revenues increase by about two percent. And I probably would be appropriate just to say to the council that if we do see a drop-off in our property values, and we don't start seeing some way of increasing revenues in other areas, whether that's through the outcome of the revenue sharing task force or some other means, we will likely be going through some of the same struggles that we see with some of our neighbors. So I guess I don't want to leave the impression that while overall we're not having the hard hits that someone like a Prince William County or Loudoun County or go down the board, we're not immune from that. And I do encourage the council as we go through these budget deliberations to keep in mind that the economy is certainly not certain going forward, and there's not any certainty about what's going to be happening at the state and county level, which could certainly continue to impact us. So while the picture's not gloomy, I also don't want to be too rosy about it. I think it's something that as you go forward, I encourage you to be very deliberate in terms of what you consider about either in approving this budget or in adding to it. I would say if the council wishes to alter expenditures, I think we need to find something that can come out. Any questions about revenues? Like I say, really the purpose tonight is just to sort of walk through things. Is Councilmember Wright?
Just to want to understand how concerned we should be about the property values falling. Do you have a sense of how high the assessments are compared to what we're actually taxing them on because of the ten percent cap every year? What's the play there? Do you have a sense of that?
Ms. Brooks, if I'm correct, my recollection is that overall, the city's net assessed value was up just a little bit over eleven percent. If your question, Councilmember Wright, is where is that cap for a homeowner from an actual tax payment standpoint, that's at ten. So we are slightly above that.
Right, but couldn't there still be some cushion there? Because property values over the past three to five years have risen, you know, twenty percent?
Correct.
Plus, depending on what assessed values are, but how much of the actual assessed are we adding?
I don't think we have good figures on that because we're not sure, you know, how many are newly purchased properties that are closer to the assessed value versus those that have been, you know, had been taking advantage of the homeowner's cap for some time. So I don't think we've got good numbers on that. That's something that we look at, but I haven't found, I mean, I haven't found a way to...
We get data at a very aggregate level. We'll get basically the total assessed value. They will show from one fiscal year to the next. Additions and abatements, we'll get a lump sum figure in terms of what is backed off because of the cap, if I recall, but it's not at an individual property level. It's such at a high level, I'm not sure that we can really give you a good answer, as Suzanne indicated.
Right, and besides that, because they do the reassessment every three years, it throws it all out of any kind of way for us to follow it. So it does make it an awfully difficult...
If I can just provide what might be what you're looking for. I agree that we don't have it on the aggregate level, but if we look at it on individual levels, I haven't looked at it in about a year, but I remember looking at mine and figuring that how long it would take to get at the point if everything stayed just where it was right now, how long would it take me under the cap to catch up to the assessed figure? My recollection for my own situation was about six years, which would make it five years from now. And of course, as Ms. Ludlow said, that could change with the next reassessment. But there is maybe for a long time, homeowners, a potential that at this point, there's a five-year backlog before they would reach a point where they wouldn't be going up ten percent a year under the cap.
But if we want, I mean, I'm not saying we should necessarily just go get it, but the county does have that information. Because they know what people's houses are truly assessed at, and they know what they're charging them taxes on. Because each one of us gets a bill.
Correct.
Which has that information, so.
Has the state provided that?
The state actually provides that. Montgomery County does the billing.
Have there, does anyone remember property values dropping and the... And have the assessments gone down as the property values going down? With a lag, with the three-year thing?
There have been budgets since I was on the council where the tax, the revenue from taxes to the city, based on the assessments, went down.
Yeah, and I think even if you don't see overall property values going down, certainly if the rate of increase is less than what it has been. And in saying that, I don't at all want to come across being insensitive to how difficult it is for homeowners who are having to bear that increase. I think, I've been with the city now almost four years. I think we have, council has made concerted efforts to try to address the tax rate over that period of time. It's dropped five cents during the four years that I've been here, even while we were taking on some new debt for roads and some other things that we have absorbed. And I think the council has also made a very solid commitment over the years to the actual match to the state credit, which is the local supplement for those who qualify, which certainly can be a benefit, especially to those who are low and moderate income. I think this year, I think we had about one hundred and sixty-five property owners who qualified for that credit. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. Off of that subject, back on to your presentation. I was trying to follow along, and I got a little lost on some of these things you talked about.
Sure, I'm sorry.
First of all, I heard you say the police rebate that's under the intergovernmental revenues is not tax duplication payment. Whereabouts, where is the tax duplication payment reflected in this?
It is under intergovernmental revenues. All the ones that are kind of the pure tax duplication payment are those that are referred to as in lieu of police, in lieu of road maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Those are actually the tax duplication payments.
Thank you. You mentioned that there was a drop in revenues. You were talking about the intergovernmental?
I had mentioned that there was a decline in highway user revenues.
Okay.
Was one of them. Actually, revenues overall are up. It's just fairly minimal revenue growth.
Okay. And then you, I think right near the end of your presentation, you mentioned an actual growth of only about two percent?
Yeah. What I was saying, I'm sorry, Councilmember Siemens, if I wasn't clear. If you take out the real property taxes, and you back off the payment from WSSC, which is actually a restricted revenue, all the other revenue sources combined were only up by about two percent.
Okay, but overall, we have about a six point three percent increase in revenue?
Overall revenues as proposed is actually seven point eight. That's including property taxes.
Thank you.
Is any other questions just about revenues? I know it's kind of overly techie, but I'm not sure how else to go through it. Okay. Like I say, we can get into some more detail, obviously, about the departmental budgets, but this is sort of just intended to set the stage. On the expenditure side, expenditures as proposed are up by fifteen point nine percent, or three point one six million dollars. Before anybody kind of faints from that number, I would mention that the vast majority of that increase, in fact, about two-thirds, is the proposed renovation of the public works facility, which accounts for about two point one four million dollars. Some other items that are actually up from FY08, which is kind of more of an accounting...
Is there a page where we can follow along on this?
You can either look at the, these are just sort of my talking points. It's on the general fund summary, which is included in your budget binder under fund summaries, or there's also a duplicate copy of it included with the agenda packet itself, if that's simpler.
Thank you.
Now, these are actually just sort of a highlight, but I'm just reading off my own notes. Part of the increase is also attributable to an increase in expenditures from the equipment replacement reserve. I think the council is most likely aware that we do set aside monies for the future replacement of certain capital items. Those are obviously going to vary from year to year, so while they are kind of an increase in expenditures, that is funding that has already been set aside in prior years for the replacement of those items. But the equipment replacement reserve capital items are up by about two hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. And then the remainder of the increase in general fund expenditures overall is in about an additional seven hundred and forty thousand. And as was noted in the transmittal message, of that roughly seven hundred and forty thousand, about seven hundred thousand of that is attributable to personnel-related expenses. So you really have a couple of major items that are essentially driving the increase in general fund expenditures. The two most expensive, if you will, being the public works facility renovation and just personnel costs. We are a service industry, so the vast majority of our costs are going to be personnel-related. What I thought might actually be helpful, if it's okay with the council, since I just mentioned personnel, is recognizing, I don't think during my four years here, we really have spent much time, other than in the transmittal message, talking a little bit about what the city's compensation structure is, how salaries get adjusted. Karen Hampton, our human resources manager, is here. If the council feels that would be helpful, it would be very brief. But I do want to make sure the council has an understanding of kind of how we come up with these personnel projections and what at least a prior council back around two thousand, year two thousand, actually decided should be our compensation philosophy. Would that be helpful to everyone?
Yes.
With that, Karen, you want to just give a brief overview?
Well, basically, in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, a city staff advisory team was put together. That was made up of some staff members and a consultant, and we made some recommendations to the council. And that's where you adopted the compensation plan, where we have a combination of steps and a wide range as far as our pay scale goes. We had decided that each year, you'll get a market adjustment, which is based on the annual percent of change in the department labor wage and salaries employment cost index for state and local government. We take a look at what December's rate was, and the index reflected for December two thousand and seven is a three point five percent. You will see us come forward in June with a two-reading ordinance asking for you to approve the fiscal year oh nine pay scale plan. And again, let me just briefly say that the pay scale is set up where there's four steps, and then there's the midpoint, and then there's the maximum. Everybody starts off with the step one, and that's your normal starting wage. Then the next year, if you get a meets or meets requirement or higher, you'll go to step two. In year three, if you get another meets requirement, you'll go to step three. In year four, if you get another meets requirement or higher, you'll go to step four. I'm sorry, to the market rate. The pay scale was designed with the intention to complete the grades, the steps in four years. Again, step one kind of starts you off at a journey level. It's a thought that you start off at a journey level, and within four years, you kind of know your job. So we should be paying you what the market is paying everybody else for that particular job. So that's where you see the market point, the midpoint step. And if you're at market point and higher, basically what you get is just the market adjustment. And occasionally, or often times, we do have a lot of good employees here, they will get an additional two point five percent if they get a distinguished on top of that market adjustment.
Yes.
Is that in our packet anywhere?
It's not in your packet.
What we can do is basically recap this and get this out to you.
If I can just add a couple of thoughts from the perspective of having...
See, you're our historian, aren't you?
Been there for the decision. What we had before, you say it was ninety-nine, two thousand?
Yes.
Was basically colas and steps.
Correct.
And the council at the time felt that that had been designed and was having the desired effect. It had been a, it had been a decision by a previous council that was way before my time, that the city was going to pay people in such a way that as they gained expertise and became more valuable and were worthy of higher pay, that we couldn't afford to pay them what they were really worth. And it was essentially, we were the training ground and they went elsewhere. And it didn't really recognize valuable employees who had expertise, who we wanted to keep, so that we weren't constantly the farm team. And so there was an effort to change from that system, which had been in place for, I don't know, ten, fifteen years, maybe longer, to one that recognized valuable, long-term employees, kept expertise here, and also made sure that there was some differentiation between some outstanding employees and some people who were just kind of, they were going along, they were getting the job done, but nothing terribly outstanding, that if we shifted to a pay-for-performance system, that we would then reward those employees who put that extra special effort forward. And so that system was changed, and it was in consultation with the employees to make sure that there was buy-in from them. And I would say that that was representative of what a lot of jurisdictions were looking to do at the time. A lot of jurisdictions changed to that, not all did. We were one of, kind of phase one to do that.
Karen, could you also just give the council an update on the classification and compensation studies?
Sure. In the '08 budget, you approved a classification study for us, and so we are on, we are working on that, starting, we started it in January, we consulted, I mean, are working with Slade Management to help us with the classification study. Basically, a classification study is just classifying the jobs for the purpose of pay. We're looking at the actual tasks that the employees are performing, trying to pay them for the responsibilities that they have, trying to establish internal equity within our organization. This is expected to be completed by mid-June, the end of June. And it goes in maybe three phases where we collect data from the employees. We have them fill out a very detailed survey, asking them different things about their jobs. Then we have the consultants come in and do interviews with those employees to get some clarification on how their job works with other jobs or other departments. And then the consultant goes back and kind of reviews that information, and then factors those positions on several factors, like knowledge, decision-making, their physical environment, things like that. It's about eight factors that they take a look at. Then they come back with the proposed new job description, have the employees look at it, and give the employees an opportunity to feel it. And so the consultant has suggested that we add to the budget in order to prepare for misclassifications of jobs, three percent of our total payroll, which we're looking at approximately four hundred thousand dollars, assuming that every position in the organization is misclassified. We know that that's not going to happen.
Didn't the same consultant do the same job classification kind of project for us in two thousand?
Yes.
Why do we have to do it again?
Well, in the market for, I mean, in regards to classifications, you should try to do it every ten years. Your organization change, job change, and we always want to make sure that we're paying the employee for the jobs that they're doing. Most often, you see big change come when you get a new city manager. So now the city clerk just takes notes here at the meeting, but Mara may task her with some additional duties that she may not be getting paid for. And so the classification study helps us to look at what Jesse is doing as part of her job, and making sure that we pay her fairly for doing that job.
Was that done in two thousand, or was it two thousand and one? I don't remember the exact year.
I think it was in...
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's been over about ten years.
It's ten years, yeah, the last one.
I think it was done after I joined the council, and I joined in nineteen ninety-nine.
I think the exact date was included in the agenda packet when this item was presented. My recollection is it's been about ten years, but we can certainly just double-check that date and let you know for sure.
So anyways, that's the classification study. And we also did an update to our salary survey. Basically, that's establishing an external equity. We want to pay what the market is paying for the same jobs that we're doing here. And so we have defined our market as being Annapolis, towns, cities, towns like Annapolis, Rockville, Bowie, Laurel, Revo, Gavisbury, College Park, and Hinesville. Basically, we went out, the consultant went out, and just made sure that city clerk's position is being paid similar to what the city clerk in Hinesville is being paid for, and looking at what the midpoint of that job is. And we established some time ago when we did the joint, where the staff made recommendations to the council for the compensation plan, that we wanted to be between ninety-five percent and a hundred and five percent of the midpoint. So we want to be paying whatever the market midpoint is. We want to be between ninety-five and a hundred and five percent of that.
And was there, are there any jobs where we go beyond other municipalities to include the counties?
We don't. We don't. We didn't establish the counties as part of the market simply because we can't compare ourselves to it. It's much larger. The budget is much larger. They're doing a little bit more than what the other towns and cities are doing.
Yeah, I think their jobs probably tend to be, in many cases, much, in some instances, much more specialized than ours because they have kind of a bigger scale of service. Their jobs are much more narrow, whereas ours probably tend to be much more interdisciplinary.
But at the same time, it can be the case that a number of people who work at the city then move laterally to jobs at the county, and to the extent that they're in, we're in that same... in that same geographical area, they are, they do have an effect on our market for salaries.
Yeah, I think that certainly can be the case. The municipalities that Karen just mentioned were those that were actually agreed upon, I think we've asked, and that is spelled out in the union agreement, that those would be the ones that we would survey.
I was asking, since the county, if they don't make any adjustments to their contracts with the employees are pretty well locked into 8% increases over the next three years, which would have, could potentially have quite an impact on our salaries.
8% increases?
Each year for the next three years.
In the county?
Yes.
And they're also trying to, in Montgomery County, reduce by 250 employees.
Trying to what?
Reduce the number of employees by 250.
Yeah. I mean, I can say, working in local government, I would probably echo what Karen said. I just have never seen counties be benchmarked to municipalities just because of, just the scale. I don't disagree with you though, Mayor Williams, that that is something to keep in mind, but it's just not been the market that we've identified, that we benchmark to.
I was just going to observe that I don't recall in business world of this type of benchmarking going on. It's more of a market-driven in looking for employees and you pay what it takes to hire an employee that has the qualifications you need. It's interesting to see the difference.
What, between private industry and government?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say it's pretty common in government. We've done it in every community I've worked in.
I've seen it in private industry too. Large companies, particularly with very prescribed roles, they will go out and survey to see if they're paying competitively, particularly when they, if they start to get into a situation where they feel like they're losing employees or they're not getting the cream of the crop or sense that they might not be competitive before they want to start up the salaries. You know, if they have 500 computer programmers, they might, they want to go out and survey the custom markets. They do do that.
I think just a couple of things I just wanted to follow up on from what Karen said. As she mentioned, the consultant did recommend that we have some funding set aside as sort of an implementation pool. They were here last week and I was told the same thing that Karen was, I think, that it's much likely, less likely to be 3%. As I noted in the transmittal message, because of just kind of the concern about property tax rates and trying not to over-budget, quite frankly, and be speculative in terms of expenditures, I did not budget something separately for this implementation pool as part of our budgeting process. Unlike many cities, we do essentially budget this unappropriated reserve and there's certainly adequate funding to basically cover this expenditure. But I did want to share with the council, as I noted in the transmittal message, my assumption in putting together this proposed budget is that whatever implementation increases would be recommended, and ultimately the council does control how that gets phased in, would come from the unappropriated reserve because the alternative, quite frankly, was to budget that on top of everything else, which would have started putting undue pressure on the property tax rate from my perspective.
And I was just recalling what must have been the last time that there was the classification. And my recollection is that there were a couple of positions that were fairly far out and some of them that were, needed some smaller adjustments, but that it wasn't, it wasn't of huge impact.
Yeah, it's not, you're right. It's not uniform across all positions. It's very individualized. So that's why I don't want any employee who might be listening to this to think they're automatically getting an additional 3%. And I think at least the indication was it would be city-wide considerably less than that figure. But that, once the study results are in, that'll certainly be something we'll be reviewing with the council and talking about different options to implement any recommendations that we receive from the consultant. So it's ultimately the council's call how that works out. Any questions just about the general wage adjustments? Just two other brief personnel issues and then we can kind of continue on with the general fund overview. Just wanted to remind the council that at this point, we still have not received our health insurance rate quotes from the health insurance carrier. I believe Karen said she got a call from the broker and I think we will be in the process of setting up a meeting to see what those final adjustments are for fiscal '09. For budgetary purposes, we have assumed an increase of 14% in the cost of employee health insurance. That was based on the advice of our broker. I think any of you who basically are in the business of having to buy insurance for any company you're associated with, double-digit increases for health insurance have been the norm for about as far back as I can remember, quite frankly. So that one issue that we'll just kind of have to wait and see how that plays out. Hopefully, maybe we might be lucky and it might come in less than 14%, but I'm not counting on it. The last issue I just wanted to touch on very briefly, and I'll kind of leave it to the mayor if he wants to schedule some separate time perhaps during the budget process to talk about this, was the issue of the police pension plan. And this was an issue that I had spent some time talking about in the transmittal message. We do have our own plan. We broke apart, broke out of the state plan right around 2000, 2001. And the goal in doing so was to basically provide police officers with 25-year retirement. As I understand it, I was not with the city at the time, but a number of options were studied and setting up our own plan was deemed to be the most viable way of basically providing officers with that benefit and for the city to continue being market-competitive with other law enforcement jurisdictions. As I noted in the transmittal message, one of the things that we have encountered and has been a matter of great discussion on the police pension board, and I began sitting on that board after the retirement of Deputy City Manager Hobbs, is the whole issue of disabilities. Obviously, when you set up any type of pension plan and you're trying to set up funding requirements, you make certain assumptions in terms of what is your rate of return on investments to cover administrative expenses? And you have to make projections as well about when people will retire, what they'll be making, and the rate of disability. Over the life of the plan, which obviously is still a relatively young plan, what has come to pass is that the rate of disability has been much higher than was originally envisioned. And that has put a lot of pressure on the actuarial contribution rate. For FY '09, the actual required contribution rate is just over 29%. Excuse me. In talking to the actuaries and in participating in the pension board discussions, this has been a matter of great concern because in the absence of trying to get some of the disability rates under control, that amount is going to increase dramatically. At a minimum in FY 2010, so I'm kind of jumping ahead a little bit, you know, that rate is probably going to go up slightly. We have seen, you know, fall off in sort of investment returns. So while we've been assuming an 8% return on investment to help cover some of the administrative costs of the plan, the actuary, you know, some of the legal costs associated with having a plan, just the investment advisors, we're probably not going to hit that 8% target. But probably more importantly, we just have had a lot of offices go out on disability. As I indicated in the transmittal message, in early March, the board kind of brought to conclusion, at least to make a recommendation to the council, which I'll be working with the mayor to get scheduled. We're having to have some discussions with the union about this. But the board did vote to recommend to the council that the city's pension plan be amended. There are really two changes. One is a benefit to those more tenured employees, and I can get the council more detailed information, whereby those employees would get a higher contribution rate. And this is folks who were actually employed by the city as of 2001. For that group of employees, though, in return for getting essentially a bump in their actual pension benefit, the disability provisions of the plan would change. Right now, if they have a line-of-duty disability, regardless of whether it is catastrophic in nature or not, they essentially get 2/3 of pay. For employees who were hired after the plan was created, if it's non-catastrophic, they get 50%. So there already is a disparity between the two employee groups. In the absence of that amendment being adopted, what the actuaries have indicated to me is that the city's contribution rate would increase by about 26%, which probably has a price tag, and this person can correct me if I'm wrong, but probably in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars, just for that incremental part of it. So it's certainly a very serious financial issue. What they have recommended to me is that we try to contribute more than the actuarially required rate every year. Because of kind of some of the disa, impact of the disabilities that we have experienced, we're probably not making the progress in, you know, increasing the funding level of the plan. And so the proposed budget basically does reflect a contribution above and beyond that that is required actuarially because of that recommendation. The required rate for FY '09 is, I think, 29.13. What we have included in the proposed budget is 31%. So like I say, we will be bringing forward that amendment formally to the council. I need to get with the mayor, but probably sometime either in the latter part of May is when I would like to actually schedule a more full-blown work session. In preparation for that, I will get the council something more detailed in writing so that you can kind of mull that over and give that some thought. But from my perspective on the personnel front, that is a looming financial issue that we, it does warrant some discussion during the budget process.
Sounds like marking up that fourth Thursday.
Well, yeah, depends how the rest of it goes. I think the only other, just kind of pending issue I did just want to mention, because it's really not specifically addressed in the budget from a funding standpoint, it was certainly mentioned in the transmittal message, is the whole issue of the two bridges in Tacoma Park. And I, and we've talked about this very briefly before. We have two bridges in the city that are essentially ours to repair, replace, are their legal responsibility, based on bridge inspections that are done every two years. Both reflect that they will probably require repair or replacement sometime in the near future. That doesn't mean next year, but that is looming. We have had ongoing discussions at the Revenue Sharing Task Force about this issue. I am a member of the road maintenance group that is working on that tax duplication formula. And I think obviously the open acknowledgement that the current tax duplication formula doesn't really contemplate what happens when you have to repair or replace a bridge. You get a couple thousand bucks a year. That's probably the highest it's been since I've been here. I think it's been as low as 17. Basically, you do some very minimal maintenance. Until the task force continues its work, and I think you had the opportunity a few weeks ago to have Councilmember Urban here, I think while Suzanne has talked to her and some of her aides about this issue, I think there's really not much I think the county council is going to do, since it is a very broad policy issue that the county's going to have to take up. I think the county council is waiting for the task force to conclude its work. My guess would be that what the task force report hopefully will show is that it is an issue that needs to be addressed. I don't think we'll resolve all the, you know, answers to the question. One of the things that Suzanne and I both have been talking to the county staff about, and once again, not to add to your fourth Thursday, Mayor Williams, but that may yet happen, is that the county staff would like to get the bridges into the federal funding cycle. And I'm in the process of preparing a document to give to you that'll outline this in a little bit more detail. But that is a very long process to get basically into the federal process for funding and design. If the bridges qualify, and we believe these two would, the federal government could, would provide 80% of funding for their repair or replacement, but there is a required local match of 20%. I think the public policy issue that we need to work out with the county is who's going to pay that 20%. From my perspective, as someone on the Revenue Sharing Task Force, the standard is if we did not exist, who would be responsible for paying that 20%? And it would clearly be the county. There's about over 20 bridges in Montgomery County that fall into municipalities. Obviously, this is from a county that's struggling with its own financial issues, and that's a little bit of a hurdle to overcome in terms of them accepting that liability. So that issue is still unresolved. I think Suzanne and I both have gotten calls from some of the county staff wanting to know what the city's position is on that 20% because I do think they're trying to be helpful in terms of getting us into that federal funding cycle.
The issue for us is that that 20% is $780,000. So it's not a small amount of money. It's not even small for the county.
I think Suzanne, that $780,000 is the current estimate, not only for design, but for actual reconstruction.
Rules about turning the bridges into toll bridges for anyone that doesn't live in Tacoma Park.
I honestly don't know what our ability is. We could certainly ask the city attorney. I mean, we are unique somewhat in that, you know, just down the street, there's a bridge that obviously connects two sections of roadways that are not even city roads. So I mean, there are some, some unique circumstances here. I guess part of the reason I wanted to mention it, as Suzanne mentioned, it potentially has a very hefty price tag for the city depending on how these discussions with the county go. And I think we're trying to work out the timing with the county or get a better understanding of when exactly a decision needs to be made to move forward in that federal funding cycle so we don't lose a year and how exactly to juggle what has become sort of a chicken-and-the-egg thing. We can't get out of this box with the county because the issue's not resolved in the task force. And my guess would be probably best-case scenario of what would come out of the task force report is an acknowledgement that it's an issue. My feeling is it can't really be addressed in a formula because there's way too many variables associated with the bridge from one community to another. One of the county staff people had suggested that perhaps we recommend some kind of municipal grant program so that variable can be worked out. But I did want to share with the council that we may be coming to you and asking for some guidance before this budget process wraps up because my guess is we're going to find ourselves a little bit with our back against the wall and having to decide whether we at least preliminarily make some commitment with the thought that we might continue to negotiate this on a political level.
I would like to add also on that, that the county staff don't have other bridges ready to go at this time to take advantage of the federal funds that are available. And they're likely to walk away from those federal funds if these aren't the ones that go forward. So they're rather anxious not to turn away money. So if you're having individual conversations with county council members or others, it's helpful to say, gee, you hate to have this money go elsewhere in Maryland. This would be a great time to step up for that. So I just wanted to let you know, they, there's an, there is an anxiousness of using those federal funds, but there is the concern about setting a precedent that both sides have on.
But it does sound like those, at least one of those bridges and potentially both are at the top of the list for county bridges needing to be replaced.
They are.
Not quite at the top.
They're not at the top in terms of being unsafe. They're at the top in terms of being in a position to be able to move forward.
I'm not sure I understand that.
That means they meet the federal criteria. However, as Mara mentioned, bridges are very in individual situations and it's likely that some of these other bridges have other things going on around them that mean that it's not appropriate to work on them right away.
Okay.
So it's more that we're kind of at the right time.
Yeah, I think the other part of that, in fact, getting too technical, is each bridge is rated according to, you might have heard when they had the BI-35 bridge collapse in Minneapolis and there was a lot of discussion about bridge sufficiency ratings. Our bridge is actually rated very low on the scale mainly because there's other things that come into play besides the structural integrity of the bridge. If you don't have-
Traffic volume.
Yes, well, not as much traffic volume, but adequate approaches. I mean, obviously, you come down here, you're making a 90, you know, the intersection's sort of funky. It's overly, it's narrow. All those things come into play.
So have a good pedestrian crossing or bike crossing.
Yeah, so if you look from a numbers standpoint, you'd probably be concerned about going across some of these bridges, but it's because of some of those things that really don't play into the structural part of it.
So I think the important things in many ways are the fact that the existing tax duplication payment, when you look at the 20% cost of being $780,000 and you look at the-
Couple grand.
At the rebate structure as it's been set up currently, doesn't even begin to get you in the same ballpark as those figures. So that there's obviously something that says that this wasn't intended to address it so that the county does have some reason to be on the hook for this. And the fact that if we're not listed in there, there's no way we're eligible. And with the, with the case of the Maple Avenue Bridge that it connects two pieces of Sligo Creek Parkway. And if that bridge ends up being unusable, Sligo Creek Parkway doesn't operate.
Like I said, I wasn't really looking for any specific direction, but I did just want to make sure that this issue was sort of on your radar screen. I say I'm in the process of preparing some written materials that I had requested last week from the county staff member who's sort of in charge of the bridge program, so we will get that to you. The only other just kind of pending issue out there- The only other just kind of pending issue out there is I did want to just remind the council that we currently are in negotiations with Local Four Hundred on a new contract, which is our police union. Actually, all three people sitting at the table tonight are part of the team, as well as Chief Ricucci. So, that is going forward at this time as well. The last piece before we kind of turn to general government or any other questions that the council may have that I just wanted to touch on is the whole idea of fund balance. I'm sure always the most exciting topic that some of you look forward to every year. But it, it is really, I think, when you get all said and done, as boring as it might be, it, it's very critical, I think, as you go through this budget process to sort of keep in mind. Kind of the way to think about it is each of us, kind of on an individual basis, sort of has your rainy day fund or your own personal kind of savings account for contingencies. And, and a fund balance for a local government is sort of along the same lines, I guess is the way to think about it. Included both in your budget binder under the fund summaries, or for ease, if you want to just pull out your agenda packet, there is a one-page sheet called General Fund Fund Balance Projection Detail. And this is essentially more of a breakdown from what you see on the, the general fund overview. Does everyone have that page? Yeah, it's
It's after the PowerPoint.
It's after the PowerPoint, and it's on the reverse side. So, yeah, it's, it's on the flip side of the general fund summary.
Little half page.
Yeah, kind of, probably a small page with the fewest numbers on it, if that helps. In Tacoma Park, we have, like most communities, there's a combination of both kind of unrestricted or unreserved fund balance, and then there's a component of the fund balance that is actually In Tacoma Park's case, and like in some communities, the monies that are actually restricted are a matter of local policy. In some jurisdictions, you'll have special taxing authorities or things whereby law, these monies are restricted. That's not the case here. This is really, for the most part, policy decisions that were made many, many years ago. Mayor Williams is our historian, might be able to tell me how far back some of this goes. But these are policies that were put in place, for the most part, in the city charter. And kind of just going down the chart, there was, there is a component of the fund balance that is referred to as an emergency reserve. This initially started out as a contribution or a set aside of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a number of years ago, and, and basically is somewhat minimally adjusted, pretty much by investment earnings or by the CPI amount. It is very specifically delineated in the charter how those funds can be used and by what means they're expended, and essentially no money comes out of the emergency reserve without specific direction from the council. So, there is a process in place that if you really have a lot of interest in it, you can go read your city charter. The other portion which we touched on a little bit is the Equipment Replacement Reserve. And these are monies that are set aside for the future replacement, as it would imply of equipment. And what we try to do is project the replacement cost of a particular item, a dump truck, however many years out, and from a, kind of a solid financial planning process, is try to set aside an incremental part of that cost. Say if it has a fifteen-year life, so you set aside a little bit each of that fifteen years, so that when you get to the point you're replacing it, you're not having these huge spikes.
Like we should be doing with the bridges.
Like the county should be doing.
Like the county should be doing with the bridges.
On our behalf, right. As I had mentioned, I think in, in both the budget presentation a few weeks ago and in the transmittal message, I know when I got here, we were kind of finding fits and starts in terms of I would ask, well, why is this not in the Equipment Replacement Reserve? And there didn't seem to be a lot of rhyme or reason. We would do certain vehicles, but not others. Rather than try to figure out why that was, during this fiscal year, I charged both Ms. Brooks and our Public Works Director with basically really going through our fixed asset list and the accounting records in terms of equipment and other things that we owned, really kind of scrubbing, if you will, the Equipment Replacement Reserve list. And I, it went from minimal to about, how many pages? More than Yvonda cares to remember.
About six.
How many? About six or seven, and it's really small print. But I, I feel confident, I think, saying to the council tonight, that I think we have a really good list, kind of going forward. Obviously, when you go through a process like that, kind of what your price tag is jumps up considerably. And I think beyond that, truthfully, in looking back, I went through with Yvonda's help, records for about the last fifteen years, and kind of looked at what had been contributed to the Equipment Replacement Reserve. There were about four or five years in a row where nothing was contributed. There were some other years, and I'm not criticizing any of my predecessors. I don't know what was going on at that time. But years where either nothing was contributed, or quite frankly, there was more money going out.
We were spending the money.
Okay. Or more, yeah, there was a lot more going out than was going in. In an ideal world, based on the analysis that we did, we should be contributing probably about one point three million dollars a year to the Equipment Replacement Reserve. A lot of that is, truthfully, catch-up. In putting together the proposed budget, quite frankly, I just, there needs to be a balance between what you're trying to set aside for the future, and truthfully, what you're trying to do today, and obviously, the concerns of your residents in terms of just, you know, their own personal financial situation and other city priorities. I think probably for the last few years that I've been here, we've been trying to bump up that amount. What's budgeted this year for oh-eight is five hundred thousand dollars, and that's the amount that I am proposing to be contributed in FYO nine. So, while it's not perfect, I do think it's a, it's a pretty, if we can keep that level up, I think at least we're making some headway in that direction. The last component of what's considered the reserved or restricted fund balance is the contribution we get from WSSC for future street work. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it tonight. As I indicated earlier, Mayor Williams has asked for a little bit more detailed information about that, and we'll get that out to the council. But essentially, that's monies that are specifically set aside for future street work, and basically, it'll show up in a future audit report as being restricted as well. All the restricted part of the fund balance, if you look at kind of the ending number of where we think we'll be at the end of FYO nine, or as of June thirtieth of two thousand and nine, we're estimating that we'll have a fund balance of about four point seven eight million dollars. Of that amount, about thirty-four percent would actually be considered restricted in some way. I know when
Is that the reserve? That's the reserve.
Right, that's the reserve fund balance. I think one of the issues that I know, used to be a perennial favorite of former council member El riches, because I remember fondly every budget season talking about unreserved fund balance with him, has to do with exactly what your unreserved fund balance should be. And I guess what I would say to the council is it really varies a lot from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. I've seen it be anywhere from ten percent in some jurisdictions, as high in some of the communities I've worked in, as high as twenty to twenty-five percent. And part of what drives that is truthfully how stable your revenue sources are. In, in my last community, we had a, we were fortunate, unlike in Maryland, where you had a lot of different ways to raise money, but we were very dependent on sales taxes. And we had three major businesses that contributed about sixty percent of our sales tax revenues. So, if one of those were to close, we would have been kind of dead in the water. So, that's part of what drove the fund balance in that community. The ten percent probably is on the lower side. That's probably the lowest I've ever seen it. And those are going to be communities where your revenue sources are pretty stable, and you're not really subject to a lot of fluctuation, fluctuation from economic or other factors. I think part of what Ms. Brooks and I both look at is, you know, certainly cash flow needs, besides just the stability of our revenue sources, is when we have money coming in, and truthfully, she gets to watch it as it goes out, and to make sure that, you know, we have the cash on hand as needed, particularly when you're doing more large-scale capital projects, and you tend to have more going out than you have coming in. And that was particularly true, I can think of early in my tenure, when a lot of the community center construction was going on, and that was all being done pretty much on a reimbursement basis, and we had huge checks going out. We obviously don't have that situation right now. But I would say that the, the unreserved fund balance that we proposed as of June thirtieth two thousand and nine, I think is at a level she and I are comfortable with. I would say if we were to start loading up the budget with a lot more high-ticket expenditures, and there's nothing being deleted, I would have concerns if that number drops much lower, and I'm sure she would as well. She's giving me that look. So, I think that's really, I think, all I wanted to say about the general fund. Yvonda, did I miss anything that you felt was critical, as you wanted to mention?
No, I thought you were very thorough.
Okay.
If I can just add a couple of quick comments. You referred to when the procedures were set up for the various restricted reserves. My recollection is that that was the result of, in the very late eighties, possibly even nineteen ninety, that, that council at that time found itself with a, I want to say, a million-dollar unrestricted reserve that, on a, on a budget of about, at the time, maybe six or seven million, and said, well, either, either we've been overtaxing, and we need to lower the tax rate and give this back to the, the taxpayers, or we need to do something with it that will set us up well into the future. And that's when they looked at setting up some various reserves and designating them in the, in the charter, and setting up the Equipment Replacement Reserve, and at that point, set up some parameters for what would be included, and it was for, I think at that point in the beginning, it was something like expenditures, individual expenditures of over a hundred thousand. Then, as they looked at it, it started working lower, and I think there were two or three revisions to kind of the, the size of things that would go into the Equipment Replacement Reserve. And as time went on, it started going down to lower levels and, and not just looking at big things like trash trucks, or, you know, a building, or a roof, or some, or big, you know, HVAC equipment, but looking, getting down to individual cars. And I think the cars started getting in, maybe as people were looking at something like police cars and dealing with those and, and decisions about whether to purchase or to lease, or how to do those. And so that's why some of the things kind of came in piecemeal, and some of the other ones maybe didn't get in there.
And I think if, we'll, we'll get to it later in the budget process, but in your binder, there's a section about capital outlay. And if you look at the CIP, you'll see notations for those items that are, would be paid for out of the Equipment Replacement Reserve. It has an ERR designation by it. And that might just give you a flavor for what type of things are in the ERR, and kind of what is proposed to be spent out of that in FYO nine.
And remember that it doesn't mean error.
No, it does not.
It took me a moment.
I guess, like I said, any other questions? Just, cancel my brain.
I mean, do you have any concern that this is second year in a row where our expenditures are exceeding our revenues? Like, I'm just worried we're starting to do something that I think you, very wisely, said we shouldn't do, which is kind of getting into funding ongoing activities for a
Yeah, actually, it, it, on the surface, it appears that we are, and I'm trying to get into kind of bureaucratic speak. And I can give you something more, in a more detailed breakdown, but that's something, truthfully, I look at extremely closely, because I, I do have, say I have strong concerns about funding ongoing operations out of the reserve would be an understatement. Part of the variance that you see between revenues and expenditures is because of the public works facility. I had proposed that that be paid for with a bond issue, except for the design would actually be cash. But the, the two million dollars in general obligation bond proceeds essentially don't count as a revenue from an accounting standpoint. Kind of refer to as being below the line. So, when you look at the difference between revenues and expenditures, there's at least a two million dollar chunk, that is those bond proceeds. Beyond that, a lot of it is also those items to be paid for out of the Equipment Replacement Reserve. So, once again, you don't see, I think it's about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, Yvonda? Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
Which is, it, the whole expense shows as an expenditure, but the withdrawal from the Equipment Replacement Reserve isn't showing as a revenue. So, that makes sense. You've got about two point six million dollars of the difference between revenues and expenditures that's just purely made up of those two items.
But the Equipment Replacement Reserve is sort of ongoing. If you think about it, really, you're just using the, what you're, you're paying for what you're using that year, in a sense.
Right.
So, it is, in a way, on, you know, we need the police cars, we need the trash trucks to do
Right. It, it's ongoing, but I guess the way, Councilmember Wright, that I look at it is, it is an item, items that we specifically set aside funding for. So, I guess I don't have the same concern about doing that, because that money is tied up. We haven't planned for the replacement of those items. It's just a matter of kind of where the money's booked, kind of, if that makes sense. I actually, Yvonda and I kind of went through and did our own quick and dirty analysis to make sure, I guess we were kind of staying within our own financial principles. And I think when we looked at backing out essentially the, the public works facility, the Equipment Replacement Reserve, and there are a couple, at least proposed, very large one-time expenditures, such as the proposed charrette for the Washington Adventist Hospital site, we'll talk about it a little bit later, the Communitywide Strategic Plan. But when you take out some of those items that truly are kind of one-time items, the budget's essentially balanced between revenues and expenditures. And that's kind of an analysis I just kind of do almost pen and paper myself, just to make sure that I feel comfortable with what I'm proposing to the council, and essentially that we're living within our means. So, anything else? Okay. A little bit late. Just wanted, Mayor, if you're okay with it, to go through the General Government Department. There's not a lot there to talk about, but are you okay, since it's after ten o'clock, with doing that? Or do you want to
Spend a little time doing that?
Okay, I just didn't want to.
If you don't do it now, we'll have to do it Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, there's always another Thursday, Councilmember. Siemens, you are correct.
And, and maybe this is a good time to point out that I've tried to schedule the Thursdays to only be seven-thirty to nine-thirty, so that we don't wear ourselves out too quickly.
I don't want you to burn out the first week. That would be troublesome. I don't think the General Government Department will probably take that long. You have gotten previously kind of a departmental summary, and we got some more detailed division narrative out to you last week. Also included, just in the agenda packet materials, which may be sufficient for tonight's discussion, is sort of the, just general overview of, of the department. I would note that a separate meeting time has been set aside for the Information Technology Division, mainly because that has typically been an area that many councilmembers have interest in. So, we've set aside some time later in the budget process for that. So, the areas that we were going to touch on briefly this evening, we're the Legislative Division, General Management, Finance, Legal, Human Resources, and the City Clerk. It may sound like a lot to cover, but quite frankly, there's not a lot of overall changes in the General Government Department budget. I'm going to kind of speak to the broad departmental overview and touch on a few areas, including, just for the purposes of comparison, including Information Systems. The overall department budget is up by about five percent. Like many of the city department budgets, general government is largely personnel-driven. About sixty-eight percent of departmental expenditures are tied to personnel cost. In fact, of that roughly five point two percent increase in the budget, which equates to about a hundred and twenty-three thousand, personnel costs in the department are up by over a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So, pretty much when you, you look at what's driving the increase in this particular departmental budget, it, it's personnel. There are actually some offsetting decreases to the personnel cost. One thing I just wanted to remind the council is that the FTEs in the General Government Department budget were adjusted mid-year in FYO eight. This was really, for the most part, the department that was impacted by the organizational restructuring plan that I put in effect after the retirement of the longtime deputy city manager, Wayne Hobbs. I think everyone knows Suzanne Ludlow was promoted to deputy city manager. Her old position, community and government liaison, was eliminated, and Karen Hampton, who's here this evening, kind of took over Mr. Hobbs' role as sort of the lead HR person for the city. The funding, basically, from those changes, including the elimination of a part-time parking enforcement position in police, went to fund three new positions in general government, which would be an assistant to Ms. Hampton, a new position in information technology to basically help us keep up with everything that we've been adding throughout the city over the years. And we've also added a position in the Finance Department, which we've had incredible difficulty so far, training a, a great candidate, unfortunately, but it was going to be a finance budget specialist, which hopefully next year will be in place, and Ms. Brooks and I will be doing less of the budget work. But there is no change from those adjusted FTEs proposed for FYO nine. I guess just a few items I'll touch on, and then certainly want to hear whatever questions the council may have. Earlier this year, the council did approve an amendment to the legal budget. And you may recall that, talking about the fact that we have spent a considerable amount of money this fiscal year on the proposed development at the Tacoma Metro Site, I do anticipate that there will probably be continued legal activity related to that project in FYO nine. Overall, when you look at the adjusted legal activity related to that project in FY09. Overall, when you look at the adjusted legal budget for this year and the proposed for '09, it actually is down by about $30,000, but up considerably, quite frankly, from what we have spent over the past few years. Just to kind of put it in comparison, the original budget for FY08, before the council passed the budget amendment, was just about 172,000. Some years we've spent as low as about 130, 140. What we are proposing for FY09 is a budget of about $202,000. And once again, I think that cushion is really intended to make sure that we have some funding in place. As I do anticipate that the council may want to wish to continue to consult with the city attorney as Tacoma Metro development moves forward. Some other items, just to kind of mention, and once again, I'd just like to open up questions. It's just to point out some changes in the legislative division budget. This is actually sometimes referred to as the council budget. It is probably up from a percentage standpoint more than other budgets. It's up by about 18%. The reason for that is really twofold. One is last fall, the prior council did pass an ordinance basically adjusting salaries. Once the new council was seated, FY09 will really be the first year that the kind of full impact of those salary adjustments is budgeted and reflected in the budget. The other item which the council may want to spend some time talking about possibly this evening is, as I noted in the division narrative, we have included some funding for a contractual lobbying service. As I mentioned, when we went through the organizational restructuring, one of the things that, that I did was to eliminate the community and government liaison position primarily because we were trying to fill some holes in some other areas within the general government department. We had hoped to actually have somebody on board and to bring a proposal forward to the council before this legislative session that just ended. Suzanne and I had met with someone that we considered to be a very good candidate, what, late last year? We're going to hopefully bring this individual forward to meet with you all. And then she indicated to us that later in 2008, she was planning to relocate with her husband to Florida. So we didn't see much of the point in starting a relationship with someone that we couldn't continue, which was unfortunate and I think put a lot of stress on everybody this past legislative season. I've included $15,000. That was based on sort of a fairly low-scale, I think, assistance based on our conversation with this individual. Suzanne and I have had meetings with two firms and are waiting for some proposals. In all candor, I'm not sure if that $15,000 is going to be enough or not. I think one of the things that we'll want to discuss with the council, once we've probably identified someone that we think, you know, might be a good fit and would be well-qualified, is the exact type of service that we're looking for. I think one of the things Suzanne and I have learned through this process is there's lots of different levels of lobbying assistance that you can get. It can be, I think we've always envisioned it to be somewhat a mix of both kind of in-house and contractual assistance. But that is an issue that we'll be bringing forward more information on after we get these proposals and have a better sense of how an arrangement might be structured. And certainly, the council would need to meet with whoever Suzanne and I have identified and make sure you're comfortable because essentially they'll be working very closely with all of you as well. The last thing that I probably just wanted to comment on about the general government budget, because quite frankly, there's not a whole lot to it that's that interesting, is the general management division. I have included $60,000 for a community-wide strategic plan. I think as we were going through the priorities discussions with the council, what I took away from that more than anything else is that the council really wanted to try to lay out a framework and kind of a path, I think, for not only this council to follow, but hopefully for other councils to follow to come. So we had some continuity in what we were focusing on. In terms of my recommendation that we actually kind of develop more of a community-wide plan, it is a kind of a change in philosophy than I think what we have done in the past. I think before, it's been kind of the council setting priorities. And ultimately, that is your, your role as the elected policymakers of the city. But I think what we have done as an organization is it's kind of top-down, if you will. It's the city sort of setting the priorities, certainly with some input from the community. But I would not say it's, there's been broad-based community input into that process. What I'm suggesting is really something where the priorities that we set ultimately are determined by the council, but quite frankly, they're largely community-driven. And there's a couple reasons for that. I worked in one community. The process was ongoing when I got there, but I had the opportunity to see this at work. And I think they were able to get a lot of community support, buy-in. I think that engaged the community in terms of making some of the real choices that have to be made in terms of developing priorities. We can't do everything. We can't be all things to all people. And there are decisions that have to be made. And I think the way to really have a community consensus about that is to make sure that the community is actually involved in that process. It's a different community in a different state, but one of the things that I saw come out of that, and I've seen the same group work with a number of other communities, they could not pass bond issues in that state without basically a vote of the people. Basically, they developed a lot, a whole infrastructure plan. There was actually a citizen corps that basically kind of threw their weight beyond it and sort of carried the weight for that. But I think those things passed overwhelmingly in large part because the community didn't feel they were rammed down their throat. They felt they were a part of making the decisions that those projects should go forward. Now, obviously, we don't have that same structure, but I think this community has a long history of wanting its residents to be involved. The pricing that I included in the budget was based on my conversations with the National Civic League. This was the organization that had, has done work for a lot of communities that I'm familiar with. For those of you who are not familiar with them, they're probably more well-known for being affiliated with the All America Cities. That's a different part of their mission, but they actually have a division that really focuses on kind of community-building, strategic planning. And obviously, we would have to, probably in most likelihood, issue an RFP because there's probably other agencies that do that. But I did want to just share with the council that's where the pricing came from. I think in a nutshell, that's probably some of the highlights of general government. Most, as I said, probably a good chunk of the budget's actually just personnel. There are no increases in FTEs. And if it's not personnel, quite frankly, a lot of it is services and charges such as legal costs. But these were some of the items that, as I thought about it, I felt were important to fly for the council and to kind of get a sense of how you felt about that or ask questions.
All right. Thank you. And I especially thank you for including the money in the proposed budget for the strategic planning. I think, as you describe it, it is a little bit different than what I was thinking about. I think it's an important part, and certainly the community planning is a very important part of what we need. I have been most focused on strategic planning of the, of the government itself. I like the idea that we start, as you say, from the top down by looking at bottom up, I don't know which it is, by having the community input. And certainly, you know, they are the stakeholders, they're one of the major stakeholders in the process. But I do want to see the strategic plan rolling into the budget process in future years so that it is really helping this council to guide the government and how our, our limited resources are allocated and used to, to meet the community needs. And also to give clear direction to city staff members and to you, obviously, on, you know, what it is that we're trying to achieve and, and how we can use our limited resources to get, to get there.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Councilmember Siemens, I think, I think certainly having any policy direction, regardless of how the council chooses to arrive at that, whether that's through the community-wide strategic plan as recommended or this council setting priorities, I think that becomes critically important as resources become more limited and we're trying to respond to our residents' concerns about their own property tax burden. So I agree with you wholeheartedly.
I, I also agree with you, Terry. And, and look for some kind of feedback loop. I mean, it's one thing to ask, to find from the citizens what their preferences are. That's crucial. But also to have some marker or some way to know if we're making progress toward our strategic plans. And I'm not, I'm not convinced that what you're recommending has that element built into it.
The process, and once again, I'm, I'm alluding to the National Civic League because that's what I saw at work. It is a process that is, it's a document that's living. It is the citizen group. They have a, essentially, it was in charge of the community, it was a community of 80,000 people. I was an assistant there. Their stakeholder group, as I recall, was several hundred people broken down into committees. They met on a regular basis to basically touch base to see where they were at, to make adjustments in the plan. And I would say that it's not a one-time shot. You normally go through, at least what the National Civic League recommends, is that you probably kind of revisit the plan. Your communities change, priorities change, probably about every five years or so.
Is that plan tied to, to the programs in the city itself?
Yeah. I mean, I think, like any strategic plan would be, I think you have your broader kind of vision of where you want to go, but there's certainly action steps that are associated with that, that, that both affect the community, you know, as a physical entity, but also the organization. It's both, as it can be.
Both, I'm sorry, both what and what?
Well, I think you can see basically things that are essentially issues in the community itself. Sometimes those are land use decisions. Sometimes those are actual infrastructure projects. I've seen some strategic plans that also deal with more kind of internal organizational issues, which may be charges to staff in terms of customer service focus, things of that. I think it's really a very individualized process, and it's whatever the community wants it to be, quite frankly.
So the process that you've seen work had in this, in a, a city of 80,000, had a couple hundred people who, citizens, who were divided up into groups that would study a particular task or something, or a particular area of the government's function. And then they would meet on that periodically and report back to the council? Is that, or would they report to staff?
No, they didn't report to staff. And actually, I wouldn't say they were necessarily studying a particular area of city government. I think they would take a particular service area almost. So I didn't want to give the impression that they're sort of like an oversight committee, but they're really focusing on kind of whatever that strategic goal is. And they're a stakeholder in terms of carrying it forward. I would say, and I'll be very honest with the council, you have to have a comfort level as, as an elected body to some degree while you retain ultimate control when you ask people to devote that kind of time. You're essentially allowing your community to largely drive some of that process within certain constraints that are kind of set forward by the council.
Different from committees, though, in some ways. Is that true?
Yeah, I think it's much different.
So our health services committee that's trying to get a sense of what the needs in the community are for health services would play into that or not necessarily?
I, I have-
If you take health as an example.
Yeah, I would think they would have a role in that. I mean, I think certainly if you have committees of the council that are advisory, I think that should be sort of dovetailed in. But I think the idea of, always what I had in mind, is probably much broader in scope and much more inclusive and involving more people than probably just the committees.
Okay, let's talk about it, if you don't mind, talk about it a little bit more. You have a, let's take health as a, as an area of focus. And there's the health services committee now. But because it's an important area, there are, we find 25 or 30 people who are-
She hears my worship with the, with the gavel.
I'm fine. I'm not comfortable with, with this discussion until I get a more, a better sense of what we're talking about. I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
So we expand that, that area of interest, and more people are brought into the mix. And they inform the health services committee, and the health services committee informs that larger group. And that larger group then informs the council. It's a combination of the health services and a larger, and a larger group that's trained in part by this initial expenditure of a community-wide strategic planning effort? Is that, do I have that right?
I think it could be. I think part of what I have seen is each community is different. So I think what, if there was someone from the National Civic League or anyone who does a lot of these type of processes, Councilmember Robinson, what I think they're going to tell you is there's a framework and a model that they have found that has worked for communities across the country, but there's probably subtle nuances from community to community because it has to meet your particular needs.
Well, there's subtle nuances, but we have our community, so we can kind of extrapolate a little bit on what we know we have right now. And I'm just trying to get a sense of where you think it would go.
Assuming-
Which discussion we will have when we talk about the strategic plan, if we put the money in the budget?
I'm sorry, when we talk about what?
When we talk about the strategic plan, what?
Strategic plan process, if we decide to put the money in the budget, we'll, we can have an expanded discussion. But-
Yeah, all right.
We don't, we don't want to design it here without having gotten to the point of we're going to keep it in the budget.
All right. I'm glad to sort of step away from it, but I, I think it's important, and, and this is an example of, if something, of this importance is put on the table in the, in the budget, that we have some sense of what it's about from the beginning. So that's why, that's why I stretch the conversation a little bit more.
And I think she's given her kind of summary vision. And I think each of us probably had our own summary vision, and someday we'll have to sit down and argue with each other about it.
And what I could do, if it would just be helpful to the council as you kind of go through the rest of the budget process, is certainly I can get you some additional information and even show you probably some examples from some other communities that have used this process. I can contact one of the ones that used to work for.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Wright has a question or two, and then Councilmembers never.
I would just say very quickly that I'd be interested and open to hearing more about the ideas that Barb has and how she's seen it used in other places. My gut reaction is that I feel like I hear a lot from my constituents in the community. And I think that's my job as the elected official to listen to what people have to say, take into account what I personally think is best for the city and what the values, values of the community are, and make a decision based on that. And I'd be a little bit, having just gone through a open community process that didn't think served us that well around the metro, I'd just be a little bit worried about how that could be co-opted or how arguments could be made from that information to push one way or the other that I don't necessarily think would be constructive. But I'm open to hearing more about that. I do have a question, which is, as we think about things we wanted to add to the budget, I think we have to be very specific about what they're going to cost. And this being the first time I've gone through this process, do we, you know, should we write you, Barb, an email, like, for example, I'm not sure if we still do, but historically, we bought 10% wind power.
Correct.
You know, if we wanted to buy 20, or 40, or 50, or 100%, like, asking questions like what that would cost us, so then we could just go back and look and say, well, because I agree with you, we don't want to increase the total budget. You know, what, what would we-
Yeah, you can just send me an email. That is an issue that truthfully, in terms of, you know, making sure that the council as a whole has an understanding of sort of what we're doing. I know Councilmember Robinson has, you know, mentioned numerous times, and I know the whole council has an interest in sort of green initiatives and sustainability. One of the things that Ms. Rick Waite and I have talked about as, as part of her budget presentation is briefing the council in terms of, you know, what are the alternative fuel vehicles that we use, the percentage of wind power, what options there might be to kind of build upon what we have. So yeah, certainly just fire off an email. Yeah, the more that you can kind of give me a heads up, then hopefully we might even be able to cover those issues during the actual departmental budget presentation to sort of limit the reconciliation time, if we can.
Councilmember-
Thank you. One thing that I was looking for in the budget and didn't see, and was hoping you might consider doing, is for these items that you have in it kind of sprinkled around where it says proposed budget includes, as in this example, what I would find helpful is for each of these proposed expenditures, particularly if they're of good size, that there be a separate one-pager, I'll call it for short-
Okay.
-that gives a little background, you know, maybe some historical stuff in there, and then a rationale for why you want to do it.
Okay.
Along with, you know, if there's like a decision thing, you know, options around this.
Okay.
For example, this is a classic case.
Right.
You just gave exactly what I would look for written down. And I'm not looking, when I say one-pager, I really mean, we're talking about a few sentences.
Right, kind of like bullet points, something that just elaborates on the dollar figure. Do you have a particular dollar figure in mind that, or just as a council, what kind of, kind of what your own personal threshold might be?
Well, certainly something like this would be.
And I assume another example would be the Washington Adventist Hospital design charrette, which has a $100,000 price tag.
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's no problem at all. I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Because then it, it sort of sets it apart and makes it, makes it clear-
Sure.
...what these are.
Be happy to do that.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions, any comments? Going once, going twice. Any other comments that you feel you have to make tonight? Going three times. Going three times.
This is more informational. I apologize, we had hoped to have the information for Thursday night's budget presentation to distribute tonight. That's probably my responsibility because I, I was out at a conference the latter part of last week, and today kind of got away from me. We will have that in your boxes by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay. And we may possibly, depending on discussions going forward, we may possibly have one other agenda item on Thursday night, which might be a brief discussion of Piney Ranch Pool.
Sorry?
Piney Ranch Pool.
Okay.
And with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.